Okay, I'm good.
Thank you.
I call to order the Committee on Finance and Property as well as the City Council Committee of the whole. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the City Council Subcommittee on Finance and Property will begin our annual budget hearing process to review the mayor's proposed FY26 budget. I want to thank Mayor Cahill, who presented his proposed budget at our regular meeting on Monday, as well as Finance Director Brian Ailes, and all the department heads and staff who contributed to the preparation of the budget. Also want to thank Mr. Perry in advance for his work in providing insights to the council. He's a valuable resource for us, as well as to Ms. Kent and Ms. DuPont, our city clerk and assistant city clerk, for helping coordinate and facilitate these meetings. As Chair of the Council's Subcommittee on Finance and Property, you know, I have the responsibility and really the honor, I view it as, to chair the budget hearings again this year. I view this as a prime responsibility of our local government and take this very seriously. So, I guess I'll get right into it. There's been a lot of discussion about our local funding and priorities over the last year, and I hope that we can have a bit of a discussion over the next two weeks. We've got three meetings, scheduled about four hours each meeting. It's 12 hours, in addition to the public hearing, to really talk through some of the high-level stuff that we've been hearing about in advance of the public hearing, which is going to be Wednesday, June 18th. And at that time, that's really the time for the residents to come in and, you know, present their comments to us and concerns about the budget. The full council, then, we're going to vote on a special meeting the next Monday, June 23rd, and wrap this all up. So that's what we hope to accomplish tonight. We're going to hear from Mr. Perry. We have Mr. Ails in the audience. We also are going to hear from Dr. Riccio, our Superintendent of Essex Tech, as well as Dr. Chiroczak, Superintendent of the Beverly Public Schools. Mayor Cahill, I expect, will be joining us at some point as well to present the executive budget. For those of you, I guess, councilors, we've got the online version, we've got our books. I hope folks have done some research and have questions. And for those following at home, the online version is on the city website on the homepage, so you can follow along. And I guess with that, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Perry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, and good evening to all the councilors. I come before you tonight to give my oral commentary regarding Mayor Cahill's FY26 budget. I forwarded to you Monday night after your late-night meeting, my report, so you had it in your hand, I'm sure you all read it that night. But I do forthwith give you my comments, my thoughts, my concerns, and certainly I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have afterwards. That said, probably the most important thing I do as a budget analyst on an annualized basis is look at the mayor's budget proposal and make a determination whether, in my opinion, it's a balanced budget. I stand before you tonight and tell you that, in my opinion, the FY26 budget is in balance, that revenues do match expenditures, and if you were to pass the mayor's budget over the next couple of weeks, you would get a tax rate in December from the Department of Revenues. So I do start my commentary along those lines. With regard to revenues, the mayor is proposing that $173,716,413 be raised. I have reviewed those figures in consultation with our Finance Director. I agree with their assessment, I think it's accurate, and I'm comfortable with the numbers. We, the administration is proposing that $7,761,503 be increased from FY25. That is a 4.67% increase from the prior year, and I'll come back to those $7.7 million in a minute. The levy limit is increasing by $4,364.07. That's a 4.67% increase. It uses the remaining excess levy capacity, as you heard the mayor the other night. That was approximately $688,000. That excess levy capacity no longer exists if you pass this budget this month, and would not be available in FY27 or beyond. The new growth was calculated at $1.2 odd million. I'm comfortable with that. The administration is suggesting that we only use $150,000 of overlay. I want to quickly comment about that. Last year, we used about $250,000 in overlay. That's, for those to refresh their memory, for those at home, the overlay is used to pay off abatements, dealing with the assessors. Two years ago, I think it was like $400,000 to $500,000. What's happening because of the challenges of the FY26 budget, the administration is dropping that overlay this year to give a little bit more ability for revenues, if you will. I'm okay with this, and reviewing the overlay account, I think we're going to be all right in that area, so I'm not uncomfortable, but we will not be able to do the 150 in future years. This is something that will put more added stress in future budgets, but for this year, I'm okay with it. The mayor has used the Senate's version of the local aid. Chapter 70 is higher by $665,000 from FY25. We have in prior years used, there's the governor, the House, and the Senate. We have in years gone by used sometimes the more conservative approach. The Senate version, and I wrote to you about a month or so ago, is a little bit, is the most generous one out of all of them. Again, it goes to the stress issues associated with the FY26 budget, in my view, as to why they did that. Local receipts. The local receipts is appropriate in nature. I must tell you, which I did in my oral, in my written report, the issue here is we're not as conservative on local receipts as we have been in prior years. Again, we need more revenue, given the challenges that the administration is facing to provide services here. We've had some lengthy conversation for you financial forecast people over the years regarding local receipts. We had one member, a school committee member, who was pretty adamant we should not be as conservative. I understand she even brought it up at your joint meeting. She's somewhat getting her wish this year. It's not as, maybe as much as she would like, but it's important that you understand we're not as conservative as prior years. That will have an impact in your free cash position. I wouldn't call it a large materiality, but it will somewhat reduce our free cash and the decisions you're making on this budget. You won't see that till a year from November, because we'll close out the FY26 and do the balance sheet a year from November. So I just want you to be aware of the fact that you will probably see some slight decreases because of this behavior as it relates to your free cash position in the future. The water rates. The water rate, they're recommending $3.90 go up to 4.25 per cubic foot. The sewer is $650, going up to 7.29. The combined water sewer rate is $11.54, or a 10.96% increase from last year. Last year, we went up 6.12. This year, we're going up 10.96%. The reason, a couple of the reasons this is happening, to refresh your memory, we talked about the Hale Street project, where we used retained earnings there, so we discussed at that time, we drew that down. There's not as much retained earnings left to go over to offset the rates, so that's one factor. Some of the other factors, the sale in Beverly Water Supply is billing us for a little over $2.5 million for a 5.4% increase, and the SESD is billing us for a little over $5 million or a 5.8% increase in the SESD. So, these factors coupled with cost of living inflation and things of that nature is what requires the 10.96% increase. I should also advise the council in some preliminary conversations I've had with the administration, the SESD is looking to do some large capital projects. If you haven't heard that, they, there's a special legislation law that conforms to the laws of Proposition 2.5, so as such, we may have a robust conversation in the future with regard to capital projects over at SESD. On the expenditure side, in my view, the expenditures do match revenues at the $173 million odd dollars here. On the public education side, the Beverly Public School Systems are going up 9.07%, where the mayor is proposing $7,105,550 increase from FY25. As I reported to you, that out of all the new revenue of $7.7 million, the mayor has proposed that 90.77% of all new FY26 revenue go into the Beverly Public School System. Evoque Education is going up 10.8%. It's an increase from FY25. It's my understanding, and I understand the superintendent will be here tonight, you will be getting billed for 206 students. It's based on the student population from last October, and I did review that budget. I can, I will publicly state, I had, I called Mr. Paul Manzo to ask some questions, and the man literally called me back from England while he was on vacation. So I thought that was pretty impressive. So he was very helpful to me, and we can get into that later. Public education, when you look at both vocational and the BPS system for the Beverly Public School students, incorporate 96.5% of all new revenue for FY26. So the mayor has made a huge commitment, financially speaking, as it relates to the Beverly Public School System and the vocational education. Bottom line, it's the public education of the students of this community. Now, in fairness to the public school system here, and I spent some time with the new business manager, who, on an anecdotal note, I think the city did a very wise thing, she's a very talented woman, and I'm really enjoying working with her, but the Beverly Public School System has eliminated 35.12 FTEs in this FY26 budget. 27.12 come from grants and revolving funds, and the remaining, approximately several eight positions, come from the general fund. So on top of even the large investment being made at the Beverly Public School System, they have decreased a lot of the, you know, FTE positions down there, given the challenges that the city faces. So I thought I'd bring that to your attention. On the municipal side, I wrote to you, as you saw, I did a breakdown of the major departments within the city here. Pretty much, the, we saw a decrease on the municipal side of $1.4 million on the major departments. The largest component of that is roads and sidewalks. As we now know, roads, for years, I should say, we appropriated roads and sidewalks in the operating budget. Given the challenges with collective bargaining and payroll costs, the city no longer can afford to do that, and the mayor is proposing to shift that off of the operational budget and onto free cash for the future here. And I have to bring to your attention, it's important now, if we're shifting that, which is what the mayor is proposing, we can debate the merits of this, or you could debate the merits of this stuff here, but that is going to have a challenging impact in the future of this community for capital projects, because we have used the strategic situation of free cash to help us to do things like a police station, or the city hall, or the dollar store across the street, things of that nature, and we're able to utilize that. And I'm not suggesting that we will eliminate that strategy, but it's certainly going to get a lot more challenging, because what is literally happening, we need to use some of our reserves to do stuff that we did on the operational side. And as such, it's going to make it harder. You co-mingle that with the conservative approach of those local receipts I talked about earlier, it's going to make it even all that much more difficult moving forward. The largest increases on the municipal side involve public safety, the health insurance, and the general fund trash subsidy. The trash subsidy costs a little over three point, I'm sorry, the trash expenditures cost in excess of $3.9 million. $2,475,45 are a general fund subsidy. In other words, the budget handles that. And the remaining part to make up the $3.9 million, we collect $1,270,000 in a trash fee. This is my ninth budget with you. I have, can report to you that that has not increased in the nine years I've been with you, and it's been pretty stagnant all those years. I also want to bring to your attention that this will be the last year of the trash contract. That will require a new contract next year. It's my expectation that $3.9 million is going to go up quite a bit, and I think we need to have some conversations of, one, how to pay for that in the future, and, two, I would encourage the policymakers of this community to start having a more difficult conversation about waste reduction, because the waste reduction not only is good for the environment, but also it certainly can help save the taxpayers' money if we do that, and I think it's something we're going to have to address moving forward. On the municipal side, they've eliminated 3.0 FTEs. Most of that is just from the half, they, pretty much, a lot of positions where they funding for half a year, but it adds up to the 3.0. With regard to next year, this is probably the most difficult part I have to discuss with you tonight, and I'll try to finish up my comments, Mr. Chairman. The FY26 budget is in balance, but it's causing what is known as a structural deficit for FY27 and beyond. Some of the reason for that is we've lost our excess levy capacity. We're only going to be able to go up 2.5% next year, plus new growth. Local receipts are more conservative. As the Chair of the Financial Forecast Committee knows, we have calculated a $6.3 million deficit for next year in FY27. In fairness, I think it's going to get a little bit better than that. I don't think it'll be that bad, but in my opinion, based upon my review of all the financials and the history of this place and everything else, the city is going to have to look to raise new revenues that we're currently not raising, in a range of anything from $2.5 million to $4 million, if it's the intention of the policymakers of this community to maintain level services for FY27. I urge the city to start having those conversations today, because, let's wait till after the Fourth of July, maybe, but I think we have to start talking about that stuff. It's pretty important. I've been talking about the sustainability of some of the expenditures we've had over the years. In my view, this is the last year. Next year is going to be difficult, because of the way we spent, next year is going to be a difficult year for the policymakers, and it's something we'll have to deal with. I also bring to your attention the other concern, which I talked to some of you about, the activities of Washington, D.C. We receive about $5 million in federal awards altogether, at least half, if not more, that goes to public education. We also receive a whole boatload of other grants, and according to the Grants Director, she told me the other day, they brought in as much as $11 million. I'm extremely worried about the ability to, the city continually getting these same funding there, the policymakers down in D.C. I talk about cutting quite a bit here, and it's something, it's an evolving issue we have to address and monitor. I can tell you, if we lose a large chunk of some of these federal awards and these millions of dollars, is my position as your budget analyst, the city does not have the financial capacity to make that up going forward, and it's something that I'm extremely worried about. The last thing I tell you, I say about my concerns about next year, if you follow the papers and everything, Governor Healy, our new state rep, I'm sure, is on top of all this stuff, is frozen, hiring at the state level. They're not hiring people down there, except for certain employment like public safety and some public health stuff there. So they have a hiring freeze, and they're on top of this far more than we are at this level, at the local level. That should tell you something, that we have some strong headwinds facing us in the next year, and again, we have to be cognizant of all these various matters. That said, Mr. Chairman, to remind the councilors, you cannot either increase or transfer funds in a budget as a city council. You can only decrease the budget if you so desire to do so. On the school budget, all you can reduce is the bottom line, you have no authority over the line items in the budget, which I think was forwarded to you. But as city councilors, you certainly have the right to suggest to the school committee certain line items that you think may not work for you from a policy perspective, but you don't have authority to cut it. I make no recommendations on spending, other than any line item that I think will have a detrimental impact on the overall budget, and I've done that in the last few years, and I may end up doing it again this year, but we'll see how that plays out. But I make no recommendations, that's a policy decision for all of you. Bottom line, the budget is balanced. If you approve the mayor's proposal, you need to pass a budget by June 30th, so we can continue working on July 1st by state law. I'm here to attend all your deliberations over the next month or so, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you, your colleagues may have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Before I go further, I'm just going to recognize a few people who have joined us. Dr. Riccio, Superintendent of Essex Tech, thanks for being here. Keenan McKenzie de Franza from our school committee, thank you for being here. Emma Puglisi, the finance team at Beverly Public Schools, thank you, and Justin Ruel Kersker, our Chief of Staff to the mayor, so thank you. I'll open it up for some questions, but I have one for myself. The other night, in comparing the budget, the mayor referenced historic levels of spending for our schools, right? What do you think of that sort of line of discussion? Sort of suggests to me that we're spending as much as we can, and there's nothing else we can do about it. But at the same time, you know, there's lots of historic levels of spending that just have to do with the fact that we're spending more than we did last year, because costs go up because of inflation, you know? We're collecting more in tax revenue than we ever have, that's a historic level of tax collection, you know? The, I don't know, the healthcare costs are probably at a historic level of spending as well. I mean, do you have any reaction to that sort of framework?
Well, yes, I do a little bit. When I first came in nine years ago, I was a little bit surprised from my own institutional knowledge of the commitment, the public policy commitment of public education in this city. This mayor, and past and present city councilors, have strongly supported public education. That's a policy decision you all made. It is, you invest from a certainly percentage point of view, larger than most other, if not all, communities. I'm not aware of any other, they could be out there, but I try to follow them as much as I can. I am not aware of any FY26 school budget that's going up 9%. So the bottom line to it is, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, it's a public policy decision, this mayor feels that way. It has been historically the position of the school, the city council to support that, and in terms of whether I think it's right or wrong, that's a policy decision for the leadership of this community, not for the budget analyst.
Well, I guess I, my only thought on that, and I won't push you on it, because I know it's not your budget, but for discussion, you know, I kind of look at it as, if it's the most ever, and it's not getting the job done, is it enough? And, you know, to me suggests maybe we need to rethink the big picture, if that's all that we can do, and it's not getting the job done. So that's just a discussion point as we continue, but in, you know, the other comment I had for you, Mr. Perry, is you referenced a structural deficit, you referenced a hiring freeze at the state. Could you speak to, in terms of the process, the budget, and anything you're aware of in terms of areas of the budget we looked at, in terms of finding efficiencies, or streamlining of services, or, you know, anything other than going after new revenues, I guess?
Again, those are policy decisions. I would say on the municipal side, from my observations, they really streamline quite a bit. They cut, as the mayor indicated, he talked about things like equipment. I saw travel cuts. I saw a lot of supply cuts. There was a lot, you know, I don't, if I'm not mistaken, we're not even doing the police cuts this year, am I right on that?
We're looking for cash.
We're doing, that's right. So it's not in the operating budget. So the mayor's, mayor's done quite a bit in cutting on the municipal side. In my observations, I am fully cognizant of what went on in the city over the last several, you know, six or eight months here, it's been a very difficult year. The municipal side, in my opinion, is tighter than the school side. But the schools have their own challenges, which I'm sure they'll articulate to you tonight, and in fairness to the schools, they did eliminate 35 odd FTEs. So, it's a tough budget, but the bottom line to it, when I mentioned 96.5% of all new revenues going to public education, and we're shifting the free cash away from the operational side, obviously the municipal budget is shrinking, and at best, at least the schools are staying somewhat constant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I would open it up to, first, Finance and Property Subcommittee members, Council President. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I have two questions, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
The first, I recognize would require you to have a little bit of a crystal ball to really answer, but I'm just curious about what your sense of any, being prepared to pivot that we might need to do. I noted that you did mention that for this budget, which is balanced, we're using the Senate's version of the budget, which is the highest Chapter 70 allotment. I'm curious your sense of how likely it is that it comes in at that number, and then, if not, what kind of preparedness we need to sort of immediately have built in, in our minds, if it comes in at one of the other numbers that's not as high as the Senate's number?
Sure. That's a great question. The way that's normally handled, we probably won't know too well after we pass this budget. The legislature seems to have a tendency to go into late July. I'm sure with our new state rep, that won't ever happen anymore. But, but that said, what we normally do is make adjustments to local receipts to do that, so most, almost all the communities pretty much do that, so I wouldn't worry about that too much, so that's something we, I'm not too worried, don't worry about that part of it. We can make adjustments to local receipts and see how they keep coming in up until December.
Thank you.
May I ask one other question?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My other question is a slightly different topic. I think when we have these conversations together, whether it's in financial forecasting or here in our budget process, or just throughout the year, I often think that we sort of understand or have come to an understanding of what we, what we're thinking about, what we mean when we talk about the, quote-unquote, the rainy day fund, the money that is put away as revenue to sustain the city in a case of a recession or other kinds of need. A question that I receive a lot is, would there be a possibility of putting less money, at least temporarily, into such a fund if we're in a tight budget spot? Is this a time to think about that, and is that something that would be prudent, given the needs on both sides of the budget? So I'm curious if you could weigh in on that.
Sure. Well, as you know, our financial policies require 10% of free cash to go into the stabilization fund and 2% to go to the OPEC trust fund. But policies are not statutes or ordinances or things of that nature, that's a discretionary thing. However, I can assure you, it's a best practice, it's a good idea, and I certainly strongly support it moving forward. If we were, as you hypothetically talk about here, the concept of reducing free cash to be used, as I understand it, for operational costs, which, you know, I know that's been brought up to me in the past, as your budget analyst, I would advise you against it. It's not a good idea, in my view, because what's happening, we're going right back to what I'm already worried about now, the shrinkage of reserves, especially in the free cash side here, and our ability to handle capital improvement stuff here. If we were to do that, you're going to shift even more resources over the operational side, and I agree with the mayor, he's talked about it several times, as the budget grows, we should be growing those reserves simultaneously, because it could very well happen to us all next year, we may have to tap it in, and we'll have that conversation. But the bottom line, Madam President, as your budget analyst, I think it's a bad idea. It's a best practice to continue on as we are. We have to, in my view, we've gotten to the point where we only have so much revenue, we're going to have to really rethink the services we provide, or raise more fees. That would be on the municipal side, and quite frankly, the school side, or a Proposition 2.5 override, which I'll defer to all of you for that conversation, that's definitely not going to be my call. But those are the only areas I can see, either you raise revenues, cut services, or a little of both, but I would not recommend that proposal as you have articulated.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other councilors, Council President.
I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I don't have any specific questions for you, Mr. Perry. Just on the point, I'm concerned about the structural deficit that you're projecting for FY27, but I can't really say that I'm too surprised, given the rate of spending and our capped property tax revenue. So I know that, you know, the next few weeks, we'll all be diving into the budget here, and I would just encourage my colleagues, you know, we have to make some tough decisions, so we should not be afraid to ask hard questions. So I'll just leave my comments at that for now. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Okay. Mr. Perry, you'll be with us for all our hearings, correct? I know.
Okay. Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So I guess I'll open up to other councilors, but I guess would ask you to try to keep it at a high-level discussion for now, and then we can dive in as Mr. Perry.
I've been up here long enough, I agree.
Exactly. Mr. Councilperson, you go ahead, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, high level. As I'm sure with my colleagues, we've all sort of seen what was coming, and you've presented it in your memo about the structural deficit that we're likely to run into in FY27. What amount would the council have to cut? Obviously, we can't reallocate it, we don't have control over that, but what amount would the council have to cut from this year's budget to make a material difference in minimizing or heading, we probably can't head it off, but minimizing the stresses of the structural deficit that you're talking about? And I guess I would ask for sort of an estimated dollar number and/or a category, probably a single category, because sort of going through each line item, trying to, you know, take small amounts off would be a very hard, hard lift. So that's my, my high-level question.
So, it's a good question, councilor. I can answer some of it, and some of it I'm not going to be able to answer for you, but I'll do my best. So I bring, I remind you again about that excess levy capacity, that we've done a pretty good job over the last several years. I told you about my real concerns about Washington, D.C., and I don't know what's going to happen here, but it would be nice if the budget could be reduced, and this is strictly Bean County 101. This is not, what is the city needs, that's up to you and the mayor, the school committee and everybody else. That's not my job. But certainly, I'd be real happy, at a minimum, to see a reduction in the budget, like the $688,000 on the excess levy capacity. If we were to do that someplace along the way, at least that, or if not a million dollars, I'd say between $688 and $1 million would be, as a bean counter, make me feel happy, because what I would then recommend to the administration and the assessors is that we not use, utilize the excess levy capacity. That would be sitting there all fall along before we set the tax rate, in case something really bad comes at us. You know, we always can use stabilization, but, you know, if something bad comes specifically out of D.C., we would have the capacity to reappropriate in such a manner to raise that $688, if we were to have that there. So, I guess to answer your question, from a Bean County perspective, anywhere from $7 to $1 million would be that. In terms of what would I cut, I can't answer that question for you. That's a policy decision, you know, I, it's above my pay grade here, I think we all agree with that, but I would say- But I would say to you, it's pretty obvious where the stresses are. I mean, I've articulated it, I mean, you know where it is. We, it's, the municipal side is really cutting, you know, and and so the stresses are on public education, and that's where it is.
If I may, Mr. Chair, one follow-up. Can the excess levy capacity be voted on and to be raised at any time of the year? Does it have to be done at the budget?
The ex, the, that's predicated on at the tax rate time, when in December, your public hearing on the setting of the tax rate. What happens is, you remember the shift of one seventy-five? That's part of that equation here. And so basically, right now, the mayor's proposal, you're going up to the levy limit. You're there with this budget here. If you were to cut it, you know, it's still up to the authority, it's not the authority of the county, not even the authority of the mayor, believe it or not. It's up to the assessors, but I'm sure they would work in tandem. If you were to cut it, I would hope that they would, you know, leave the excess levy capacity. I can assure you, you're going to need it next year.
So could the council effectuate a delay now and a holding the possibility of raising the excess levy capacity in the fall when we set the tax rate? Is that sort of procedurally an option or no?
If if it's your intention to try to give relief on the tax levy, the only way to do it is to cut the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Perry, thank you. Counsel Bowman?
Thank you. I know we'll get into it as we go department by department, but just wanted to know from your impression at a high level, given that the aim is level service across the board, how should we be thinking about most department budgets on the city operational side having small sort of numerical decreases? Maybe it's just a tiny percentage point, but fewer dollars, with the exception of public safety going up four or five percent? What are the different differences in cost structure we should be thinking about or how to interpret that level funding costs very different amounts, depending on the way the department is structured or our goals for that department?
I I don't know how to answer that question, to be frank with you. The municipal side is certainly tight. We've shifted the strategies, the shift away from free cash from the operational side. In terms of, if your question is, what services do you want to provide? That's kind of your call. I apologize, I'm not understanding the question.
Well, no, I'm just, as we start to go department by department, are we mostly looking at, for example, numbers that have been generated directly from existing collective bargaining agreements and not changing the level of staff? Or are we looking at budgets that were built from the ground up for what it takes to provide the service? Or are we looking for percentages up and down where departments all treated the same? That that's sort of from looking more closely at the budget development process than we have? How should we think about that?
I'm sure Mr. Ailes could maybe answer that, but my understanding, I wouldn't call it a zero-based budget, they didn't do that, but they did look at what they're providing. They worked hard, in my view, to try to maintain the same level of services. I think in general, they are trying to, there's some cuts, as I told you, some small, three FTEs are going to be reduced, really almost six of them, if you will, over a half a year period. The challenge, I think the services will be the same, in my view, what I think strategically, and they can address it when they get up here, but I think what they did is they made it a lot leaner for the staff to do certain things, supplies and travel and training and, you know, they tried to hold on to staffing to provide the services, but it'll be more challenging on the municipal side, at least in my view, with regard to providing those services, because they'll have less stuff to work with, if that helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counsel Philbin, did you have a question? Sorry, you had up earlier.
Yes, kind of. It was kind of similar to Counselor Houseman, but on another side of it. I know you had said in terms of cuts that would be effective, but it sounds like you're saying the, your analysis of the budget is it's pretty lean and there's not a lot of places to cut. So I guess I'm wondering if you, from your, in your opinion, if you would recommend that we focus more on, I'm I'm more interested in looking at revenue generating in terms of not cutting services and making up that differential for 2027. So I do not want to cut any more services in my my reading of the budget. And I was wondering if you had a number that if we were looking at raising revenue instead of cutting from this current budget between now and fiscal year 2027, what would that number look like?
Sure. As I indicated in my presentation, I thought we needed to raise somewhere between two and a half and four million dollars in new revenues. The areas I think you need to focus on are the trash fee next year. I think you need to focus heavily on school fees, like transportation, athletics, preschool stuff, the after-student kindergarten, those are areas that could be explored. I'm not sitting here, this is a policy decision way above my pay grade, but those opportunities are there. I think between the trash fee, which we're spending something like two point five million dollars almost, and looking at very, there was a really wonderful presentation made to the school committee, I think last March, I have it in my folder back at my desk here. You all see my desk back here, right? Back at my desk, I mean, I looked at it and spent some time with the school officials. You know, you could generate as much as two million more dollars from school fees as well, in my view. And then, as I indicated earlier, if none of that works for you, you can talk about a prop two and a half override. Those are, I don't see anything else, Counselor, beyond those areas for to generate revenue, if that's the policy direction you want to go, but those are the areas you want to look at. And I can assure you, Madam Chair of the financial forecast, we'll have a very good conversation come November on that area.
Yep, no doubt about it. You know where I stand on this.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Counsel Sweeney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question pop up after Counselor Houseman's line of questioning on the excess levy capacity. So, you know, as we all know, we're utilizing the entirety of what was about one point five million dollars in excess levy capacity over two fiscal years.
Two years, that's correct.
If the council approves the budget as the mayor's proposed, which is pretty significant. I think that utilizing the entirety of that excess levy capacity in such a short amount of time is contributing to the structural deficit that you're projecting in FY twenty-seven. And so the question I have that came up is, are bond rating agencies going to look at the fact that we're relying on this revenue in such a short period of time that we know we're not going to have in FY twenty-seven as a reason to potentially downgrade our bond rating?
That's a great question. I can assure you that Beverly's not alone in this. If anything, Beverly's better off than most. A lot of these other communities are doing a lot of cuts and layoffs, right next door in Salem and Peabody and and other areas I've observed from a distance. It's a crystal ball question. My gut instinct's telling me no.
Okay.
I don't think it will affect the bond rating, but what will affect the bond rating if we, any year, you you pass a budget that revenues don't match expenditures, and that's what, probably the biggest thing I do for you all is making sure that occurs. Next year, that's going to be a challenge. Some of you may want to cut, some of you want to raise revenues. It'll be fascinating to watch how you all perform in all this stuff, but I don't think it'll impact the bond rating, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I wish you the best. Good luck.
We'll be back, I'm sure. Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you for being with us. We have you on our agenda tonight to talk about the executive department budget. Do you have any comments at the outset, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. The podium's coming. We had to use it outside for the for the pride celebration.
The budget cap?
I can bring it in.
Sure.
I just need a hand. Oh, just came right out.
That's all right. Because, well, I don't know, you you did quite admirably without it.
We really are lean. Jeez.
All right.
All right.
That's what's up.
Thanks. Where did my notes go? Here they are. Yeah, I would like to just share, if I could, just want to share a thought on the overall budget. I know we're talking about my executive office budget, but some of this you heard the other night, but given the continued interest and conversation around the school budget, just a couple of thoughts. We have, over the last twelve budgets, increased our school funding by thirty-seven point one million dollars. In the last two years, we've increased it by twelve and a half. The challenge is always that the state infrequently really provides much in the way of new funding. It's been the reality for Beverly for most of the thirty-plus years since every form passed in nineteen ninety-three. At present, there are, I believe, two hundred thirty-two school districts in the state who are categorized the way we are as minimum aid districts. And the minimum aid districts, all we get from one year to the next is a certain amount of dollars per student. And and it really doesn't, it doesn't keep pace with what we need. You've also heard me say in the past that before the two recessions of the early two thousands, the state provided aid to Beverly, city and school side, that in the aggregate, provided about twenty-two percent of our operating budget. Today, it only provides about fourteen percent. So we have, as a community, for the last twenty-odd years, had to make that up on the on the local revenues only. So anyway, it's been a challenge and it's something that that many of us have been working with our partners at the state level for a while on. And, you know, we we hope, we've heard, you know, we've heard, I don't want to use the word talk in the wrong way, we've heard discussion that various branches of state government and chambers within the legislative branch are ready to revisit the Chapter Seventy funding formula again. It's been some number of years. I have been advocating that they revisit how special education costs are shared and what more the state can do, because that's, you know, that's in a lot of ways the biggest challenge on the higher end of costs. So that that's, you know, we're engaged in that together and hopefully there'll be some progress made. But it it bears saying that we are putting lots and lots of new money into our schools. We've listened very carefully, you have as well. I mean, we've traveled this journey together and my colleagues on the school committee and our school leadership, and, you know, we made the commitment in last year's budget, during last year's budget process, to put five point six million dollars in new money into our schools in FY twenty-five. And we sat down and worked through what it would mean in twenty-six, in order to bring our educators to the level that they had pointed out they needed to be at and that we ultimately, after doing the research, agreed with them. So, you know, that money was all on the table after last year's budget. And a part of that is what we brought forward as a proposal for this year. Seven point one million dollars in new money for our schools. When you add in the additional, the increased amount to go to the tech and an increase in in money out to charter schools, that's about seven point six million dollars of the seven point seven, seven six, seven eight that we have to spend. So, you know, we have pushed it across the table to make sure that our schools are what they need to be. I also want to point out that we have, in the proposed school budget for this coming year, fifty-five more school staff than we had in the last school year before COVID, in the in the nineteen twenty school year. And that is more teachers than we had before COVID, more parers than we had before COVID, more adjustment counselors, social workers, literacy and math science coaches, more people working to deliver the the greatest education that we can provide for our for our public school children. So it's there. I know some want to focus on what isn't there. The reality is that we are resourcing our school professionals, our staff, our leadership to deliver incredibly high-quality education for our children this coming year. So I wanted to share that. As far as the executive office budget, it's, there's not a lot there. I think I'll just let you, you know, point to what you might want to note or ask questions about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll open it up to subcommittee members. Counsel Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to start by saying, Mayor, I completely agree with what you stated about the need for the state to revise the Chapter Seventy formula and to put more of an emphasis on assisting municipalities with the cost of special education funding. I know that's something I've advocated for with the Mass Municipal Association, and I think that's a really important issue, two issues really, that we should all be speaking up to our state-elected officials about as counselors. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Specifically on the executive budget, my first question or series of questions is around the two sustainability positions. And I know that when Mr. Ailes presented to us as both the council and a school committee about a month ago, he had mentioned that the proposal in this budget reflects it, is funding the sustainability director position for half of the year, and it sounds like the operational impact of that is to leave the position vacant until January. And I noticed that, you know, we're continuing along with the initial plan to fund the assistant sustainability director with the mix of grant, and this is the year that it would then come fully on to the operating budget. So I'm just curious, given that the sustainability director position is vacant, was there any consideration of just promoting the current assistant sustainability director into the full-time sustainability director role and then only keeping one of the two sustainability director positions?
No.
Okay. Is there any specific projects or workload tied to the second position that led to that option not being considered?
There is more than enough work for the two positions. There has been since before we created the second position. I can tell you that working on some of the initiatives that have been part way complete when when Ms. Keefe left have taken a lot of time from various staff who who have many other things to do. You know, our purchasing agent, our finance director, our solicitors, me, the dynamic is that we're, you know, we're making it work right now, and it is taking, it's taking bandwidth that should be focused on other things for some folks. You know, the need's there. We may, we may go ahead and try to fill the sustainability position before January. We'll track how, you know, how revenues are looking over the first quarter. We'll look at other lines within within the executive budget, or we may time it up for for January, that, you know, we'll we'll track it, see how it goes. But there is, you know, the the work doesn't really slow down, there's there's plenty to it. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of extra work the last few months with some of the, thankfully, thankfully, it's proven to be temporary freezing of federal funding and the inability to move forward with things. For example, you know, the EPA Clean School Bus Grant was frozen January twenty-second. So what we did was we immediately called the dealership, Anderson Motors, and said, please freeze our EV buses, because we don't know yet whether that federal check's coming. Thankfully, after several weeks of not being able to get into the EPA portal, not being able to get a human being at EPA to talk with us, that all was finally sorted through the courts, and we received our grant amount last week in in one of our accounts. So now we're able to move forward. Some of the buses were already in production, so they couldn't be frozen, others we paused on. But but the work in that area didn't stop. A lot of it was trying to brainstorm with state officials and brainstorm internally to to try to figure out how to avoid avoid financial damage if that money didn't come. Thankfully, it all did come, and and it's, you know, it's in hand. But it, you know, as I, to your to your question, no, I hadn't considered turning the two positions into one. They're needed, and my hope is it will be, you know, at the latest, we'll be filling them in January, and maybe we'll have the opportunity to sooner.
Okay. So thank you for that, Mayor. And to that point, though, my concern, if that plan carries out, is that this budget only has funding for the position for half of the fiscal year?
Sure.
And so, you know, let's say that that's what plays out in actuality. Somebody's in the position in January, then we're starting the, at least for this specific budget, the FY twenty-seven budget, at a deficit where we then need to make up the additional fifty thousand dollars. And so I, your point is certainly well-taken about the need for the position, and I do agree that having at least one point person with a portfolio of work agree that having at least one point person with a portfolio of work under the umbrella of sustainability is important for our city, given the fact that we're a coastal community and the magnitude of some of the projects that that position coordinates. But as I mentioned before about kind of the harder decisions we have to make, I think there does need to be a nice-to-have versus need-to-have conversation. And this second sustainability position, to me, seems like one that we should further scrutinize in that lens. So that's why I ask about it.
Thank you, Counselor. President Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm flipping over a few pages in the book on your executive budget, but I was curious if you could talk a little bit about what appears to be a reduction in the summer learning initiative line, which I assume to be the summer reading program at the school.
Right.
Is that correct? So I'm, I, it appears that it's projected to be at $30,000 for FY '25 and requested at $15,000 for FY '26. I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about if that money is budgeted somewhere else to make up the difference, or if you anticipate the program being smaller, what the impact would be?
Yeah. And we've, we've been going hard after grants, and successfully, and straight donations from some of our local businesses. And so, you know, this was of necessity, right? I would have preferred not to cut it in half, but it, you know, we've just dug in harder on securing outside funds, and I think at this point, the balance that we're seeing in the account is going to, you know, is going to take us through the summer and leave us some still to work with after that.
May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
Thank you. That's helpful. So it sounds like, from what you're saying, that there would not be an expected reduction in the number of students served or the services provided, that it's, instead, it's about funding it in a different way?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Actually, I had a follow-up, Mayor, and both President Flowers and Counselor Sweeney's comments. Related to President Flowers, you mentioned in your, you sort of alluded to, where things are changing, right? We're not getting the same amount of dollars that we used to get. And I, having been on the council now since 2013 at various times, a lot of these budget items have been here for a long time and probably predate me and your time, you know, even. Things like, you know, some of these, these sort of downtown initiatives, economic stimulus, they were put in place for a specific reason. Have we revisited those? Are those still valid? Are those still the right priorities? Are there other things that those dollars could be better utilized for? Or are we comfortable that everything we're committing to here is absolutely needed?
Yeah. I guess I'd respond by saying that I think categorically, the needs are not less. In fact, they probably are greater in some to all of those areas. And so, at least as we stand before you today for this coming budget year, this coming fiscal year, our goal and our hope is to be able to make those resources available again and see which community partners, you know, step up and try to continue the good work.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And related to Counselor Sweeney's question, I guess, the constituent services position as well, is that still vacant? What is the plan there?
So Ms. Amelia Bovin started Monday of this week. Some of you have met her.
Okay. I have not.
It's not a position that I feel, look, if we're standing here next year, some to all of us, and there's a need to cut X amount of dollars, we're going to be looking at a lot of things. But I will say that the person filling this position has more work to do than the position can handle any given day and provide, I think, a really important service that helps you all and me and our department heads and their staff in trying to help residents, visitors, businesspeople in the community really navigate and find answers to challenging issues any given day of the year. So, I mean, I certainly believe it's needed.
I was not aware of the new hire, so just questioning whether that was still open, what the plan was. Thank you. Counselor Hausman, do you have?
Good evening, Mayor. Yeah, I want to focus on two items that I imagine are interrelated. One is the zeroing out of homeless services. It has been 10,000 a year. It's, this budget, zero. And the outreach and coordination for residents needing critical services. And would ask you to sort of talk about the interrelationship between what was funded in homeless services and what constitutes examples of the application of the outreach and coordination for residents needing critical services. That's on page 19.
So, as we all are aware, these are funds that need to be applied for competitively, right? And then they are awarded. The homelessness money, there had been no application submitted for several years. Yeah. And at the same time, the community partners, and these are all not-for-profits, right, that were going after some of these other buckets, have been expressing, you know, a need for more resources. And, I mean, you know, housing is tougher. Think of some of the services provided by the organization that's been a recipient of that funding, the outreach and coordination work for residents needing critical resources. Been a lot of housing intake and search work. There's been a lot of food insecurity work, English language, adult basic ed, things like that. And so, as the needs keep growing, we try to respond with that, with that shift.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bolling?
Thank you. I had a similar question, and I know we talked last year about what a revised RFP for homelessness services and/or combined services would look like to try and understand some of the needs more fully. There are times when, if the pool of money is not large enough, then no one applies because they can't run a whole program on a smaller budget. So I hope that that's still possible, to convene partners who are continuing to work on homelessness in the community to identify the needs more fully. But wanted to also ask about the youth services line, which looks steady in terms of funding. And I know we have supplemented that the last couple of fiscal years with ARPA funds to extend the hours and staffing of the youth center. Since during this fiscal year, we anticipate the new building opening, I'm wondering what the costs are likely to be then, given that hopefully, demand is very high to use the new facility, and the facility itself might have additional costs, being a larger building or new things that might be needed. So wondering how that's planned for in this budget.
Yeah. I think you described it well, Counselor, the ability to push some additional funding to that program with ARPA funds, we took full advantage of. And some of you were involved in really promoting and advocating for that to happen. And it's not possible this year, as the ARPA funds have been spoken for and by expiration, they had to be spent, was it by December of last year? So I think that's one of the areas we're going to track together with our partners at the Y, and we'll see how things are going through the year. And if there's an unmet need showing itself before the end of next fiscal year, hopefully, we can respond.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. And so, do we have a current contract that accounts for what services will look like in the new building? Or is that going to be a process this summer and fall to RFP that back out?
I'm going to let Mr. Ailes answer it, as opposed to getting it wrong in translation.
So there is an existing agreement that they're operating under. As you know, they have a temporary space over on Park Street that they're working out of currently, the Y, our partner. As we open the new building, it'll be a collaborative effort, I'm sure many of you will be involved, to try to define what it is we want to program that space for. That will then result in a new RFP that we'll put out for some support and management services at that point.
Thank you. So I would just encourage early planning on that. I know the transition out of the old building was delayed quite a bit. We knew when demolition was starting, but didn't have a new place lined up until a few months later. So just want to make sure the transition back in is as smooth as possible and that we're accounting for. Like, if that line needs to be bigger, I would support a bigger line, but what's proposed seems based on the previous set of services and options. So if that can happen sooner than later, and I know the Youth Collaborative Board doesn't have posted public meetings and minutes and things like that, so it can be hard for folks to know when and how to get involved in that decision-making. So the more public we can make that process to really define the level of service, the hours, things like that, that are needed, I would encourage that. And if there's, you know, if that's something we prioritize for use of free cash or reserve for appropriations or other parts of the budget if needed, obviously not for long-term recurring costs in a tight budget, but to me, that's a really high priority, and I don't yet see that reflected in this budget.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know Mr. Perry referenced some of the cutbacks that are going to be made on the city side, and he did specifically mention cutbacks to travel. But I see here, and I'm assuming, so correct me if I'm wrong, the general expenses line is going to be level-funded at $18,500. Is that where travel for the mayor's office is paid from?
Typically, yes.
Okay. Is there a reason that, given some of the financial challenges we're facing, this line wasn't cut back for FY '26?
That line covers a lot of various expenses, and if you look at the overall for this department, it's been cut. And so, we had a target for cuts. We met it. And I think there's some flexibility there. Well, very little, but maybe some on-the-margin flexibility within a department that's really, at this point, appropriate. As I said, we could be in a very different conversation in a year's time, let's hope not, but...
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate setting and meeting a cut target for the department. But I know, you know, President Flowers mentioned the summer learning initiative being cut back, and we talked about a tough decision being made there. I would think that out-of-state travel in particular would be a good area to cut back on. And I know that in a report that a local newspaper in New Bedford, the New Bedford Light, posted in December, they mentioned that you had spent the third-most of any Massachusetts mayor on out-of-state travel last fiscal year at just over $7,000.
Mm-hmm.
It's your department, you submitted the budget as you did, but I would think we would be better served cutting back in that area, leaving funding for a program like the Youth Summer Learning Initiative, and then just keeping our focus locally on some of Beverly's issues and advocating for Beverly's issues here in Massachusetts.
So thank you for that point, ma'am, Counselor. We have the budget we need for the summer learning program with the number of students who are interested, whose families are interested, and we're excited about that. As far as travel last year, as best I remember, I went to the two U.S. Conference of Mayors meetings, the annual meeting, which last year was in Kansas City, and the winter meeting, which is always in DC. And I will tell you very specifically that each time that I attend a meeting, my goal is to seek out grant opportunities. My goal is to seek out knowledge that's going to help us make smarter policies and address challenges that are being faced in other jurisdictions or being faced by other municipal leaders. I think the value in participating in those ways is, comes home very locally and makes a big difference in how effective we can be in addressing the concerns that we have locally. Because, you know, not every community has the same issues, but there's an amazing amount of overlap, and there are a lot of good ideas out there. There are also resources that we can look to tap if we find out what they are and where they are. So I'm very mindful of, attentive to, and careful of how I look to reimburse for travel. And as I said, you know, the fact that in Massachusetts, I would say that one of the most valuable things that I have participated in over 12 years has been the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I'm always looking for more Massachusetts peers to do so. Many go to the DC meeting, they don't all go to the annual meeting. I don't go every year, but I go when I see the agendas and I see the value and the ability to bring ideas and potentially resources home. So there it is.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I just have one follow-up, Mr. Chairman, on that. And I don't want to disparage those type of opportunities.
Oh, you shouldn't.
I'm active in the Massachusetts Municipal Association myself. But the one thing, and this may have been incorrect, but the report also cited that you attended the Aspen Institute Climate Conference in Miami Beach. Again, it may have been incorrect, but I, just highlighting the larger point, I think...
Well, climate conferences have a great value as well. You yourself mentioned our status as a coastal community. We have almost 14 miles of coastline. We have a lot of vulnerability. We have several city blocks that are, were built on filled tidelands and are below sea level, from the Bass River on up to Park Street. So same thing as an annual meeting. Now, typically, when I attend a conference or a meeting that is not the U.S. Conference of Mayors, I typically reimburse, not from city sources, but from my own.
Okay. I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Hausman, does he have a hand up?
Yes, thank you. Yes. Yes. Mayor, you, before we sort of jumped into the line items, you sort of addressed sort of more globally, and I want to jump back to that for a minute, if I may. I'm certain you're familiar with Mr. Perry's executive summary to the council. And I wonder if you would, so I guess two questions related to this. If you would agree with him that as the posture of expenditures and revenues now and looking forward do indicate that FY '27 is going to put us in a structural deficit position that we will somehow have to address, whether it's, you know, cutbacks or raising revenues or both? So that's the first question. Do you more or less agree with his assessment or prediction of that?
I don't disagree with Mr. Perry's concerns writ large. I think I'm going to turn to Mr. Ailes for a minute, because we've discussed that a bit over the last couple of days.
Okay. Thank you.
No, it's okay. It's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I think Mr. Perry's numbers that he references in his memo are accurate. I don't dispute any of those numbers. I think the perspective of structural deficit is relative, so he would use the term different than I would, as you would. The reference points, I think he's been able to allude to have to do with the financial forecast done last December. This budget presents a restructured budget, which kind of resets the deck when you're talking about expenditures going forward. So as part of the budget development, what I do internally is redevelop a financial forecast. And so when I look at that, going forward into FY '27, it shows, and this is preliminarily, but based on this budget, that we'd be looking at roughly about a $2 million structural imbalance, which, by the way, at this point in time, is very similar to the last few years in terms of looking out one year, right? We always are looking out one or two years and seeing a $1 million or $2 million structural imbalance. And that's why, over the course of the next six months leading up to the financial forecast, and then from the financial forecast to the development of the FY '27 budget, there are going to need to involve some conversations about priorities, some of the things Mr. Perry alluded to, and how, as policies, we as a city want to move forward. But I am in no means ringing, you know, an alarm bell from the top of City Hall, saying we're in trouble, we're in trouble. That's not the case. We're just in a situation where we need to be mindful of increased spending. We need to be mindful of the recurring costs that are baked into our budget naturally. And that's all part of the work we do every day here. So does that answer your question, Counselor Hausman? There are some issues there, but last year, when we were standing at the podium presenting the FY '25 budget, we were looking at a $2 million structural imbalance for FY '26. Well, that's... imbalance for FY '26. Well, that's gone. Granted, there aren't as many levers available to us in FY '27 that there were in FY '26. So that's where some of the work's going to need to take place. However, that $2 million deficit that is showing on my preliminary financial forecast today only assumes a 3% revenue growth. And we know every year, we grow revenues by about 4.5%, some years even 5%. So there is opportunity for, to Counselor Feldman's point, to look to revenue sources to help close that gap.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes, counselor.
Here's my follow-up.
Please, go ahead.
So if I can try to fairly and accurately summarize how you characterized the answer to my question, you seem to have, while agreeing with Mr. Perry's numbers, seemed to have a fundamental disagreement that the challenges in FY '27 are going to be as difficult to address as Mr. Perry. Is that fairly put? I mean, we know that we've got structural increases. We know we have structural increases in the trash fee, in health insurance, in union contracts, just to name a few. We know that this year's budget is using much, well, I won't say much, is using less conservative estimates, like, you know, the overlay and using the Senate's budget as a proxy rather than the governor's proxy, a budget as a proxy. So we know those things are going on. We know, I guess, that FY '27 is going to be more difficult. So I, to your question of, did you answer my question? I'm not sure you did, because I heard kind of two things going on at the same time.
So there is one piece to that comment, to Mr. Perry's comment regarding Mr. Perry's perspective on the revenues that we're capturing and being less conservative. How we operate in the city is, we will increase our revenue projections for a coming year's budget as the previous year's actuals come in, and we see that there is more room to do so. We are not getting to a point where we are overly aggressive in our revenue projections. We are appropriately proportioned to the actuals, enough so that if the economy begins to take a turn for the worse, we still have room to absorb that before it actually hits the expenditure side of things. So I don't agree that we're being less conservative in any of our revenue projections, particularly the Page Three. We grew a couple areas very specifically. We grew the expected revenue for motor vehicles. We are going up to $3.5 million. And I know we're going to get into the revenues probably a little later when it's my turn to speak, so maybe I'll just keep it very broad right now. But there are some very specific revenue expected areas, and I can point them out to you, that are appropriately ratcheted up because the actuals for this year are ratcheting up. So we're bringing them up to be in line with the same amount below the actuals as they were in previous years. And it creates additional revenue, and we expect to be able to do that next year, and the year after, and the year after, if it's appropriate. That's why I say there's opportunity for increased revenue in FY '27 that may not be factoring in. Foley and I don't want to speak for Mr. Perry, but they may not be factoring into the perspective he's sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. I'm going to attempt to move us along. Any other questions for Mayor Cahill on the executive budget specifically? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your time answering our questions.
Thanks.
And I guess that's a good transition for Mr. Ailes. Tonight, we've got revenues, the enterprise revenues, the assessor, IT, wherever you'd like to start is fine with us.
Appreciate that. And, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me to do so, I'd like to at least call up on the screen the digital budget book.
Please.
So those at home that are tuning in, understand where it is, and just do a very quick, maybe two-minute overview of what it is.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
If you'll just bear with me and give me a second here to call it up. Okay, thank you. Kim, are you able to see this?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so I just wanted to point out to everyone that the FY '26 Mayor's Proposed Budget is here on the beverlymass.gov webpage. And if you just click on the View the Proposed Budget, it will take you to an alternative site, which is the host place for our proposed operating budget. Once you're here, there are various categories that you can look in. Moving from left to right, they tend to be more high-level, and as you go to the right, they tend to get a little more granular, very similar to last year. I'm sure you all remember the budget from last year. The first section of the introduction talks about the mayor's remarks. It talks about the city as a whole, demographics, trends, org charts, things of that nature. And as you move over to the budget overview, there is an executive overview, which gets a little more granular into some of the numbers. A lot of these numbers are similar to what Mr. Perry presented in terms of the growth that we've built into the revenue side, the growth we've built into the expenditure side, where we're getting our revenue increases from, where the expenditure drivers are increasing. And as you move even further to the right, under Fund Sumories, this is where it shows all the various funds that make up the city's operating budget. General Fund being the largest, and then all of the enterprise funds down below that. And there's even a section which talks about Stabilization Fund. The balance is there, because it's all relative to the discussion when we're talking about the city's fiscal health and long-term stability. As you move further to the right, again, you get into the specific departments. And this is probably where we'll spend a lot of our time over the coming days discussing some of the intricacies of each of the individual departments. So I'll probably, at times, reference back to this area of the budget. But just to give you a sense, we just talked about the Executive Office, and within this, there are different categories. There are goals. There are mission statements. There are accomplishments in some of the departments. There are org charts. And then there are the kind of backup of the numbers at a high level, and it actually gets even granular, more granular than that as you move further and further to the right. The last, one of the last sections here talks about our debt, our debt structure, and our long-term pension obligations. These are important when we're talking about fiscal health, because these are, someone alluded to the bond rating. These are areas that the bond rating agencies look to. And so it's important that we keep an eye on what our debt ratios are, what our pension obligations are, because that's a particular category within a rating report that's called out by the rating agencies. And it's notable that the city, over the last decade, has continued to improve that position, which is putting us in a more solid financial footing than maybe a decade ago. And then lastly, we get into the capital expenditure plan, which is relevant when talking about this. And there's a section on grant funding, because that's an important source of revenue to accomplish kind of projects that otherwise might not be able to be funded in the operating budget on an annual or ongoing basis. So I wanted to point that out. Thank you for indulging me for just five minutes.
Oh, and thank you, Mr. Ailes. I think it's worth giving you guys a lot of credit for how far we've come with this technology. I recall first only getting this and to have it now accessible, and it keeps getting a little bit better every year. So thank you for your efforts there.
Sure. So overall, in terms of the Finance Department, we house the Collectors Department, Treasury functions, budget functions. We have the Auditing Department. We have the Assessors Department. We have Purchasing and IT. Those are the main functional areas within the Finance Department. We have a staff of roughly 25 or so individuals in those various departments, all with very individualized goals and missions that they operate very effectively at. We have a great team downstairs, and they do a great job. And we wouldn't be operating as great as we do if it wasn't for the staff's commitment to the city. In terms of spending, the majority of these budgets are geared towards staff, because that's the bulk of our expenditures. There are a few categories, particularly and most notably within the Accounting Department, that's where we house all of the insurance premiums for all of the city. So you'll notice, when you look at that particular budget, the increase year-over-year that is proposed in that budget is almost entirely related to the increase in insurance premiums that we're seeing through our insurance carriers and the various insurance policies that we have. We are, this is actually to a point, I believe Representative Bowen, you made earlier, about level service. We do view this budget as a level service budget. Every year, the needs change, and how we set that level service was that we didn't necessarily look at last year's budget level and say, dollar-for-dollar means level service. We looked at what historically would we spend out of certain categories, and bringing the budget request back in line with the spending that has historically happened. And we did that in all of the departments on the city side. So as a result, you see some departments that, when compared to their spending levels in previous years, it would be very similar year-over-year. But in terms of what the budget ask may have been in a particular year, it could show a decrease, meaning that they turned back money and didn't spend their full budget in a previous year. In a typical year, this general fund operating budget would generate anywhere between, I'd say, $700,000 to $1.2 million coming back in unspent funds. So we just tightened that down a little bit. Now, that can create some operational challenges as the year goes on, because there are so many unforeseen's that we have to deal with as a municipality as large as we are. And so it's important to build in some flexibility. And we try to be conscious of that in very specific areas to continue to allow for that flexibility while still constraining unnecessary or discretionary spending that could be used more efficiently The other major area that's housed within the Finance Department is IT. So all of the cities, I shouldn't say all. I'd say about 80% to 90% of the city's IT costs reside in the IT budget. That's all of the licensing agreements for all of our software programs, permitting systems, the accounting systems, all of the servers, all of the network infrastructure, switches, consultation fees, whatever it is related to our technological infrastructure is housed there. And so you see some very modest, but unfortunately necessary, adjustments to some of the licensing agreements that we have for some of our software programs. In terms of the BMEA employees, which all of my staff within the Finance Department are BMEA employees, Beverley Municipal Employees Association, they are receiving a 3% adjustment in their salaries effective July 1. So when you look at FY '25's original budget and are comparing it to the FY '26 request, you've got effectively two years of increases that need to be adjusted for. Because FY '25's original budget, we did not have established collective bargaining agreement, so they were level funded. So once the collective bargaining agreement was settled, we transferred in the money to cover the FY '25 costs. And then for FY '26, we've budgeted them at their expected salary levels through the end of FY '26. There's a lot there, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have about any particular department or lines within them.
Yes, so colleagues, I think what I'd like to do is go sort of department by department. So I guess what I'd like to do is start with Accounting Department, and then go IT, Assessor, Treasurer, Department of Government. So I guess with the Accounting Department, Mr. Ailes, I'll start with a question. I noted a change in the line item for what's now a Senior Budget Analyst replacing the Assistant Finance Director role. Could you speak to that change?
Yeah. Yeah. We try to approach every vacancy as an opportunity. And you all are familiar with Mr. Chiani. He was here last year for these hearings. He's taken a great opportunity in another community, doing what I'm doing here. He's doing in a similar-sized community. And it was only a matter of time before he made that step, because he was a very talented individual. However, in the vacancy, we really tried to take a look at existing staff, existing skill sets, how we could complement the needs that are similar as they were when Mr. Chiani was here. But maybe there might be opportunity for growth for other individuals within the department, or maybe different ways we can look at this particular position to try to complement all of the needs within the department, but at a more efficient way. So that's why you see an adjustment to the salary level. You see it actually coming down. It's still, it's been posted, it is an Assistant Finance Director position. The narrative about the Budget Analyst position is because I've envisioned this more as an analyst role, as opposed to a more senior role. And I think we're able to do that because we've got some very strong managers in the departments right now that can assume a little bit more of that leadership that Mr. Chiani was responsible for last year. And it's just a way of doing the same level of work and the same products, but at a lower cost for this particular position.
And you mentioned the status is that the job has been posted, but it has not been filled yet, correct?
It was just posted last week, so I'm just getting resumes now. So if anyone's out there is interested, please send your resume my way. I'd be happy to review it.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions on the Accounting? Counselor Spang?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about the, on page 27, or 23, sorry. There's a line for sick buyback. And I noticed that there was quite a bit spent this year and less accounted for in next year's budget. I assume that's because of people who left the positions. But I also was wondering whether that is normally something that we would have found in the Reserve for Separation of Service buyouts, and if there's a reason that we're moving to put it within the different departments instead of keeping it in that reserve.
Yep. So you're going to see this line in all the departments, and it serves two purposes. The first is, a lot of the contracts allow for buyback of unused sick time if they meet certain criteria. So that, in this case, is what we know to expect in terms of an expenditure, because these employees take advantage of this annually. We can expect it. We know their new pay rates, so we budget for it here. The separation of service will also get expended out of this line, because it is a sick time buyback or a vacation buyback upon the separation of service. That is not budgeted for in the individual departments. That is budgeted for in the Reserve for Separation of Service that you noted, Counselor Spang. And so if someone were to leave, we would transfer that money from the Reserve into the appropriate department to cover the expense, and you'll see a spike in the actuals in a prior year. But then we bring it back down to be in line with what a typical year would cost us for regular entitled employee, current employee buybacks.
Can I ask one clarifying?
You may.
So then the sick buyback line item that's within the Accounting Department, that's not for if they retire or leave. That's just for buying back sick time that they may not use this year.
As it is budgeted here, the $4,000 is, yes, it's for that. If someone were to leave, and let's say they got a buyout of $20,000, you would see the expenditures of $24,000, and we would transfer in the additional 20.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions on the Accounting budget? Okay. Yeah, please.
So not a question on the Accounting budget, but a follow-up on the buyback, because I don't know if there's another night when it's likely to come up, but the Reserve for Appropriations lines that include the separation of service buyouts, non-union staff, salary increases, and one that's labeled DPS realignment. I don't know if there is a good time to talk about those, or if while we're talking about big picture...
Now's the sweetest time of any. Feel for it.
All right. So I have questions about all of those, just how the numbers are arrived at the separation of service buyouts. Are pretty big numbers for last year, expected but not spent, and this coming year. And similarly, the DPS realignment piece, which previously was the Reserve for Negotiations line, fully expended, but now looks to be something else.
Yep. So for all of you following, it's page 127 in the budget book. So as you mentioned, there's a number of reserves that we budget. And we are unable to, I'll go through them all. So the first one is estimate for the DPS realignment. We're currently in the final phases of a review of that employment segment of our employees. We contracted with a consulting firm. They've done comparable community study. They've looked at job descriptions for the individual... looked at job descriptions for the individual positions within the DPS department, and they're at the tail end of producing a report that we will then look to implement. There will be some costs associated with that. We don't know exactly how much yet, but this is a reserve to help address that when it happens. So we would be coming before the council to allow us to implement it, and we would request a transfer out of this reserve to the appropriate lines at that time.
So just as we're looking at big picture numbers, we can assume that line is essentially an appropriation to Department of Public Services functions in some form?
Yeah, we just don't know how much. I mean, it's possible that we don't need it all, it's possible it might not be enough. So, you know, it's a best guess at this point. The next line, salary pool for exempt employees. We have about 35, maybe 38 or so, non-unionized employees. This is a pool that will allow them to receive some sort of a salary adjustment in the coming fiscal year. Just so you have a reference point, that equates to roughly 3% of the total salaries for that group of employees. The next one is a reserve for future payroll. Every so many years, we have a 53rd pay week in a given year, just by the way the Fridays fall. Every year leading up to that 53rd pay week year, we set aside a portion of a payroll run so that we don't have to cover it all in one particular year because a payroll run for us is $600,000 on the city side. It's probably another eight on the schools, you know, it's not insignificant. We spend about $4 million a week here in the city, so. The next one, reserve for separation of service buyouts. This is what Councilor Bowen, you were talking about before. We've got budgeted 360,000. We brought that down from the previous year where we had budgeted 400,000, and that is primarily because we did not spend the full 400,000 this past fiscal year. It is not uncommon to spend 400,000. We've had years in the past where we've spent 450. I don't think we've ever touched the $500,000 mark, but some of the collective bargaining agreements can require significant levels of buyout. They're able to accrue sick time and buy that back upon their retirement. They're entitled to by law to buy back their vacation time. And so a combination of those for some of our higher paid union members, like public safety, for example, could be 40, $50,000 per retirement. So if we have multiple retirements in a given year, it needs to come from somewhere. So this is, that's what that's for. And then the last one, the reserve for unforeseen. Typically, we budget $250,000. As you're all aware, this year, we're bringing it down to 225,000. That is merely just an attempt to balance the budget. You know, we would love to have 250 here, but this isn't the year to be doing it. So I would just remind you of a comment I made earlier about the lack of flexibility in certain departments this year because we have tightened some of those expenditure requests. So all the more reason that this line this year is that much more important because there are unforeseen issues. For example, snow and ice this year was about, I want to say it was like $400,000 over budget, needs to come from somewhere. This year, we were fortunate enough to have some underspent lines within DPS that we were able to cover it internally. That won't be the case next year because we've tightened up those budgets a bit.
Okay, moving along, guys. IT, assessors, treasurer, procurement, any questions related to those budgets? Councilor Spang?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under the software line item and purchasing of services.
What page are you on, Councilor?
25, at the bottom. I noticed it is a third of the cost for the central square, and the two other thirds were from the water and sewer enterprise accounts. Can you explain why they're being split in that way? Is that, it seems like a departure from how it was split before.
So we, even back when we began implementing Central Square a few years ago, we were sharing the costs among the various enterprise funds that benefit from the program. This program is an asset management program, and a lot of the city's assets are in fact water and sewer infrastructure. And so it's appropriate that they assume a portion of the cost related to this software. So that's why it's a third, a third, a third.
Follow up?
This one goes back a little bit into accounting, I think, but the over a million dollars in insurance, does that include health insurance too, or is it not?
It does not. That is just property, casualty, auto, liability.
That's, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question's generally about IT, but specifically the line that caught my eye was the purchase of equipment. It looks like that reduction, even though on paper is a reduction versus the FY24 or 25 budget, isn't actually a reduction when you look at actual spending for previous years. The reason I ask is just to confirm that we're not cutting back on what otherwise would be kind of regular updating of our IT equipment when you look at what's happening in practice, right?
Exactly. What I talked to about before, where we're aligning the budget requests better in line with historical spending levels.
And generally, because I know municipalities, especially with the increased sophistication of hackers, are really vulnerable, given that we have such limited resources as a municipality, and some of these hackers have pretty significant resources, do you feel confident in working with the IT director and some of the team there that we are taking the necessary steps as a city to make sure on the cybersecurity front that we're as protected as we can possibly be?
Yes, in fact, we've also obtained a number of grants that have helped us in that regard that have provided training to staff. They've provided spending or funds for dual authentication for all of our access points. So yes, we feel very strong in that area. That's one of the, one of the areas that I think our IT department does a tremendous, tremendous job with.
Okay, that's good.
Among others, but that's certainly one of their, one of their better areas.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Okay, any others, any other questions for Mr. Ailes at this time? Revenues? Go right ahead on assessors, please.
I had one question on page 28 in the revaluation line item. It looks like it's cutting by about half of what has been historically spent. Where would we look to make up the difference if the spending goes over?
Yep. This line ebbs and flows depending upon the cycle we're in. The FY24 spending level and the FY25 spending levels were revale years. So we actually had consultants come onboard to do a full measure and list across the city, which then needs to get certified with the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and that project is completed. We will not have costs for that in FY26. What remains in this budget is the regular annual agreements that we have with certain consultants, like we outsource some of our personal property valuations, we outsource some specialty valuations with some of our specialty properties like utilities and valuing kind of the infrastructure of utility companies, and some of our larger commercial spaces in the city require a level of expertise that we just don't have internally.
Good. Okay, revenues, any questions on revenues?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one. And I know we've had this conversation before, but I think it's a worthwhile one to reiterate while we're on camera here. So miscellaneous revenues, I know a big driver of that is the investment income revenues, which have been high with higher interest rates. Looking at actuals, I don't think that, even though a 46% increase on paper kind of jumps out, I don't think that's an unreasonable assumption. Can you just kind of outline for the council here why you're comfortable, if I'm reading this correctly, assuming a pretty significant increase in miscellaneous revenue that I would guess is tied probably primarily to our city's investment income?
Yeah, so there is a separate line called investment income that's separate from the miscellaneous line. I believe you're talking about the investment income line, and I'm happy to talk about that.
Yeah, no, I'm working off of the website, and it's not.
Oh, yeah, so that's going to group a couple things together, yeah, if you're going off the website. So the interest income line within the budget historically has brought in about, and I've got decades of data here, anywhere from 100,000, 200, even 300,000 up until 2019, the pandemic hit. On the other side of the pandemic, interest rates began changing, and the climate we were in really changed and allowed us to maximize the return on the money we're holding. And so we've been able to do that, and what would have historically been a $200,000 to $300,000 revenue line, in FY24, we were able to bring it up to, I'm sorry, in FY25, we saw this spike happen, so we brought the revenue estimate up to 500,000. So the year we're in right now, we're counting on $500,000 from this line item. To date, as of Monday, we've brought in 1.4 million. So as we look forward to FY26, we're taking that $500,000 estimate and we're bringing it up to 875, I believe, yep, 875. Plenty of room still below that 1.4 mark. We don't know when the rates are going to start getting adjusted back down, but even at that level, even if there were significant rate cuts in the coming fiscal year that would reflect our yields on our investments, it's not going to be that level of drop off. So we'll have enough time to begin to react and make the appropriate adjustments in the out years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Yeah, this is also one of the areas that I was talking to, you know, when I was saying earlier that, yes, we're more aggressive in some very specific revenue sources, and this is one of them, because there's plenty of room for us to be comfortable with the increased, the increased budget amount for this. We know we'll hit that budget mark, so.
Okay, Councilor Spang?
On page five, it has the transfers from enterprise funds. And if I'm not mistaken, that's where we're transferring some of the earnings from the enterprise funds to help pay for things.
Yep.
I just wanted to ask in general, are we still leaving enough money in those enterprise funds to cover the costs of infrastructure maintenance and upgrades over the years?
So we've budgeted appropriately to cover those costs in the enterprise funds. The level of amount that comes back to the general fund is not random. It's based on an acceptable methodology of indirect cost allocation. And so we determine through a series of cost drivers and numbers and spreadsheets what level of our various central service departments provide to support these enterprise funds, and we charge them accordingly. The biggest piece of this money coming back has to do with employee healthcare. We have people that are just water shop people, right? They're out there fixing the water mains as they break. Their cost of health insurance for their health plans is paid out of the general fund. So this is how we pull that money back from the rate payers that are supporting that function into the general fund so that the general fund isn't left kind of holding the, holding the bag on it.
Then I have one last question.
Go right ahead, please.
On page two, we have the payments in lieu of taxes. And I know this has been a topic that's come up in prior budgets as well, but is there a role for the council to play in payments in lieu of taxes, or is that really just the executive branch?
I mean, we always welcome input, collaboration, ideas. I think technically, it's an agreement between the city and a particular institution. And so it would need, like any other contract, to be worked out that way.
And it looked like it was quite a bit higher back in fiscal year '24 actuals versus what we're expecting now. Is that because there was an agreement that has come to its conclusion, or do you know why?
No, the agreements have been very steady. The timing of the payments is what can create these spikes and dips, right? Some of these payments come in in mid-July, mid-June, and so depending upon when we receive the funds, that's what fiscal year needs to be credited with the revenue.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowen?
Thank you, yeah, just building on that, I know we've talked in the past about, though not part of the formal process, in part because the pilot agreements are somewhat informal, they're not enforceable per se, that's sort of the informal role that council can play in convening a group to look at pilots, that it has been many years since such a group met, and it can be a good way for the community partners who, whose properties are not taxed to also share the non-financial benefits they provide to the city, community benefits that they offer, and for the city to present, you know, what some of the costs associated with providing services around that property are, to have that more transparent piece of the conversation. And so I've been talking to a lot of people about that over the last year or so, and seeing a lot of interest across the city, and I think it has to be done thoughtfully because our nonprofit partners do provide a lot of non-financial benefits as well that can be really hard to quantify, so it's, you know, it has to be a thoughtful process. But I think there is a lot of interest in having that conversation more publicly going forward and being able to match these numbers that show up in the budget with the broader picture. And there are some good templates for how to capture that and to say, this is sort of the city's expectation or hope, this is what the nonprofit can document and share, and that helps with meeting in a middle that people can understand more fully and appreciate.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, Mr. Ailes, I think it looks like we're good for the moment. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time in answering our questions. With that, I think we'll move to our next item on our agenda, which will be Essex Tech, and I would welcome Dr. Ricio to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. Before I get started, I would like to congratulate the superintendent of Beverly, Sue, for her longstanding partnership with Beverly Public Schools and all the hard work that she did over the years and working with us for, on many programs, so. I will get started. In the book, I'll just, I'm not going to go through the entire book, you can certainly read through it if you'd like, certainly information related to our graduate profile and our students and our mission of our school. If you go to page six, you'll see enrollment over time. So it certainly has increased enrollment, which we had been expected to do by the state as it relates to the access and for vocational and technical education, as well as making sure that we are able to increase our enrollment. Just going to keep flipping. If you go to page 10, we have a strong cooperative education program at our school. So halfway through the junior year, our students are able to leave our school during their technical week, and they actually are employed across the North Shore, including Beverly. And at this time, at publication, we had just over 300 students that were taking part of the cooperative education program, but we are now at 425. We are one of the largest vocational schools as it relates to cooperative education participation. Getting to the budget, if you go onto page 15, we started our budget process in November, which is the typical timeframe with a timeframe of having it done for February with our public hearing in March. This is just our draft. What we do is we have each of our departments, in collaboration with the lead teacher, review what their prior budget was, as well as the expenses, and then what are the needs of each of those programs. And then they present it in December to their supervisor, and then it goes to the principal. And then at that point, it comes to the director level where, and Marisa Morosky over here, if I can't answer any questions, she will. And so we started out with a 14.97% increase over last school year. Clearly, that are some wishes from our departments that may or may not happen, and certainly it did not. So you will see on the right-hand corner, the ways that we were able to decrease the budget totality and to get us to a 4.5% increase. As many of you know, in school districts, increases in costs, including health insurance, we are a member of the GIC, and it continues to increase each year, very unpredictable as well. Typically, we get that rate after our budget has already been created, and so we try to guesstimate as much as we can. Some of the projects that we have done over the course of the school year and still into is the geothermal project for the Gallant Hall, which is a $6.5 million project. But we were very fortunate in being able to take advantage of the federal rebates and the state rebates at that time that cut the cost almost in half and allowed us to get a high-tech, energy-efficient geothermal project comparatively speaking to a traditional gas project. The Larkin, I have probably presented this to you in the last five years. We are excited that it is complete. Many of your students from Beverly have actually were participating in the building of it. We broke ground in 2020, the day before the state shut down due to the pandemic. So that certainly had a barrier to completing it in a faster-than-five-year timeframe, but also knowing that it was a true learning experience for our students. Our revenues tend to be high because we do take on about 350 out-of-district students, and those out-of-district students, we reside in 41 communities outside of our 17 communities, and we do receive revenue from them. And those students are only able to take advantage of the agricultural programs. We have eight agricultural programs now. We did add an eighth one this school year, which is the large animal program. If you look on page 20, there are some of our grants that we have received, much like Beverly and other municipalities. We receive entitlement grants. So this school year, we received 1.2 million in entitlement grants, approximately 100,000 in private grants. We do have some pending grants, and out of that 3.1 pending grant, we did find out, so we are upwards of $7.5 million in grant funding. And we just received word this afternoon at 3:00 PM that we received a $1 million donation from a private foundation that will help with infrastructure projects, and I know the mayor will be happy with this, with the Clean Energy Center. So we're looking at building on our campus a variety of different locations around our program area, including electrification. We did take advantage as well. We have four electric buses coming in the fall. We cannot really do more than four because of the geographic area of our school and our students of where they're coming from. However, it will be the electrification of vehicles as well. It will also be a biomass system. So we are looking at putting in a biomass equipment for our arbor culture program. So they'll be able to take wood and lumber from our community or from our campus, our 166-acre campus, and heat that building. In addition to that, we have photovoltaic coming in for our electrical program and heat pump for our HVAC program. We're excited to state again that we are at minimum contribution. So I believe this is our fifth year at minimum contribution, which is the minimum amount that we are able to actually assess our communities at. That is a state funding formula, so it really is given to us, and then that is where we come up with our assessment. If you look on the next page, you will see your assessment. Beverly is at the top. We do have 206 current students participating, although obviously we had some students graduate. We do have 66 students coming in from eighth grade into grade nine, and they are coming from a variety of schools. So not just Beverly Middle School, it also is some private schools, but they do reside in Beverly. And so your assessment, you will see on that first line, has increased. The next page is our overall budget, which I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. It did result in a 4.5% increase over last school year. Last school year, we actually had a 7.9% increase over the prior year. If you look on page 30, you will see that we are the fifth most affordable vocational school in the state of Massachusetts, so we're excited about that. We have lots of partnerships, as you can see, going through Angel at Essex, the community projects. We do a lot of community projects. We do try to make sure that we have 26 career and technical programs. So we try to encourage all of our programs to be out in the community. As you know, our kids have been at Lynch Park and several other community-related projects that we have done for your school and your municipality, or pre-municipality, which we're certainly appreciative of. We do believe in community service for our students and making sure that they're giving back to the community by which they live. So these municipal projects are really helpful for them. Page 38 are just some donations that we take in. We do get a lot of requests for donations, whether it's vehicles that our students can actually work on and train on before they work on live equipment or cosmetology. We do get a lot of calls for animals that they no longer can care for. The next pages are simply the pages from each of the communities. So if you look on page 41, you will see really the breakdown of these communities of Beverly. That student just graduated this school year in cosmetology. She is a licensed cosmetologist, which cosmetology is the only licensing program where a student leaves with a professional license. They do get apprenticeship hours for electrical and plumbing, but they are not yet licensed electrical or plumbers. They're actually apprentices. And so Lisa will be continuing her education in business, but she will continue on as a stylist. And that is common for cosmetologists, where they will actually get a degree in business in order to open up their own salon or day spa. Some of the career areas that you'll see, you'll see the numbers. Our top career areas tend to be carpentry, auto tech, electrical, health assisting, HVAC, information technology, and plumbing. And that is it, kind of that overview. So I'm happy to answer any questions as it relates to the budget, enrollment, and everything else in between.
Thank you, Dr. Riccio. I guess to start regarding enrollment, obviously, looking at whatever page that was, your enrollment figures have gone from like 1,100 to 1,800 over 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
Beverly's numbers have increased as well, and you cited 66 incoming. That's a few of the big increase on our end. What do you see? Are we, you know, close to filling the need? I did read your comments recently about the lottery proposal, and I agree with you. I think, you know, the vocational education should be geared to students focused on those areas and appreciate that insight. What do you see as the overall picture, where we're headed?
Well, we have about 1,600 applications for 525 spots. So I don't know that we will ever fill the demand or the need at Essex North Shore. However, there are other options for students across the North Shore for technical education. PBD and Salem will be opening up their own school and increasing, when they build their new school, they will be increasing the number of technical programs, which may offset enrollment in those communities where we could then take in other students from other communities. We wish we could take every student because we do believe in this form of education. We believe that applied learning is really the way that our kids learn best because they're touching and feeling things that they're able to understand and compute and articulate how they learn, what they're learning, and why they're learning it. We will continue to increase as the demand remains constant. However, funding, obviously, as you know, to fund a building project is extremely difficult and expensive. And because our new building is just 10 years old, we recognize that we are on the bottom of the list as it relates to any MSBA funding. So we've been able to do that. For example, that million dollars that we are receiving from this private foundation, it's directly for infrastructure. And so it is not for equipment. And so we are being, trying to be creative as ways to increase access. We took a 1970 building called Gallant Hall, and we moved some renters out from the sheriff's department, and we moved an entire academy across the street and called it the SEM Academy. We renovated an old lower level for a cafeteria on that side, and we renovated the alumni memorial gymnasium. And that has all been over the course of eight years. So it's been slow and steady wins the race. As we receive money to replace a window, it's $16,000 to replace a window frame in Gallant Hall. So we just plugged away at it one at a time, but we were able to increase access as a result of the existing space that we've had. We have also finished in the fall, in September, a large animal science addition. Veterinary science is our largest program in the school district. We do serve Angel at Essex as well. So we have two veterinarians. If you have any animals, we do take care of domestic animals, and our students are working alongside the veterinarians for surgeries and care. The only thing that they don't do is overnight care. So we do everything else there. And so we did add a 10,000-square-foot animal science addition just to take care of the demand that they had.
Thank you very much. Questions, colleagues? Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I just had a few questions for Dr. Riccio.
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Riccio, for being here and for presenting. I know that you, the chair, and also you just sort of alluded to the conversations about a lottery system. I was curious about that. I may be following it incorrectly. It sounds to me like the state is interested in pursuing a lottery system for technical education. If that's the case, I wonder if you could talk just a bit about what impact, if any, you see that might have on your budget or assessments for communities in the district going forward?
Sure, thank you. I don't know that it will necessarily have an impact on the budget. However, it did pass through regulatory language. There is a bill, actually through the budget of the House, there is a vocational task force that they are seeking for to just really kind of look at that data to make sure that the lottery is something that will move the needle. One of the priorities for the state is clearly equitable access for all students and to make sure that all students, regardless of where they come from, have access to high-quality technical education. And so aside from that, we are waiting to hear from the state of how they will be handling this weighted lottery and what that means for Essex North Shore. Essex North Shore has bylaws, which is a little bit different than a regional vocational school district. So, and it's not much different, but many people get confused between a regional school district that has a regional agreement and actual bylaws. And our school was formed with bylaws, which gives a little bit more pull, I don't want to say, I don't know if it's pull or, to the actual school committee to be able to make decisions for their communities. As you know, our school committee is appointed by the city or town, which we love because we do believe that those members are in it to win it, and they make sure that not only the town and city are served, but also the students who reside in them. So with the lottery, we won't necessarily have to open up our bylaws because there is nothing in our bylaws as it relates to enrollment, other than that each community is responsible for paying a minimum of five students. So clearly, you're not in that situation. But we do have a town like Nahant that doesn't even have their own high school, just has the elementary school. And that is one of our lowest enrolled, just because of the population of the students. So regardless of how many students they have, if they have four kids enrolled, they still have to pay for the five. So there are many of our smaller communities that are quite concerned about the lottery because they do feel as though their kids from their community will get pushed out. What that will mean is then we will have to really open it, look, and look at it, is if they, we then look at an allotment of seats, depending on the community that we serve. And that would be dependent possibly on enrollment over time, meaning what percentage of enrollment of Beverly students are part of the overall enrollment of the entire district. That has not yet been decided. We do have some time because it actually is for the incoming of 2026 and not for the fall of 2025. So more information to follow. We'll do whatever is in the regulations, do what is in the regulations. We do believe that we will educate any student that is in front of us to the best of our ability. And we think, again, we believe in this form of education, and it's not going to impact us from a budgetary perspective, but it will, we will have to look at it from the number of students for each of the communities.
Thank you. And you anticipated my follow-up question to that, which would have been, would there be an allotment per community? So I appreciate that. At this point, can I just ask, I should know this, but is there either a minimum allotment or some kind of cap per community? I notice, obviously, smaller communities have smaller enrollment, but it's sort of disparate how many students from each community. I'm wondering what drives that?
Our top five communities have always been our top five communities, and that has been PBD, Beverly, Salem, Gloucester, and Danvers. Danvers is a town, but it's a very large town, and our school happens to be in Danvers. So that may be a reason why we do see a higher number of students from Danvers from a town. So it's the only town that's in the top five. But that's typical of a vocational school, that vocational schools are really founded to take care of the cities in the community, and the regional schools were formed to take care of the smaller communities that may not have had enough funds to be able to house any sort of vocational program. So it is fairly consistent. If you were to look over time, I do know that there was a little dip in Beverly enrollment, you saw, and then you kind of saw a sharp increase. But that was because of a concerted effort of making sure that if we had students that had English as a second language, we ended up hiring two multilingual, one Portuguese-speaking and one Spanish-speaking, and we were able to house events for those families as well. And so we do believe that for our students, multilingual students, we were able to increase that enrollment. And we did do a concerted effort because a few years ago, there was a concern that not enough Beverly kids were getting in. However, the policy hasn't changed, really. The policy has been the policy, and the admissions is the admissions. It is blind admissions, as you can say the best that you can. You know, we get the information feeded into us from the community or from their guidance counselor, the middle schools, whether it's their attendance or their recommendation from one of their adults in their school would write the recommendation. That is one of the changes that we made over the course of the few years. It used to be the guidance counselor, but a couple of years ago, we actually did have a family that questioned, you know, why is it the guidance counselor? My child has never seen the guidance counselor before. They don't have any issues where they need to see the guidance counselor. Could it be somebody that maybe they had a good relationship with? And so we did change that. But the format and the rubric had stayed the same.
Thank you. I just have one more, if I may, and before I ask it, I just, this is, I guess, the first clarifying question for Dr. Trocheck. I'm wondering, the After Dark program, does that show up on Beverly High School Voke Ed? Is that that line item? Sorry.
I can.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that. So I know we're not jumping all the way into the Beverly Public Schools budget, but I was just curious because, just thinking about that sort of other arm of Beverly High School students that are in part attending programs at Essex North Shore. I wondered if you could share, if you know off the top of your head, how many of the shops at Essex North Shore, how many of the communities, I don't use your correct term, are open to After Dark students? I had originally thought it was all of them. I'm given to believe that's not the case. I'm curious if you can share if there are, if it changes year by year or how that's determined.
It does change year by year, and I think it just depends if the leadership changes within the school district. For example, we did have Marblehead when Dan Bauer was there. He has since gone to Danvers, and the new Marblehead superintendent no longer wants to pursue After Dark. So it really is just that partnership. Beverly has been in since the second year of its inception, I believe it was the 1920 year. And over time, we have, we've seen it decrease a little bit because we have eliminated some of the programs that they have access to. But I know that Beverly is also taking advantage of the Salem Career Technical Education Center as well, which is great because, again, it fills seats. And we have right now, we have currently Swam Scott in Beverly.
Thank you. So is it correct to say that it's not, an After Dark student from Beverly can't choose from all of the shops available? For example, can they choose electrical?
They cannot. We did try that. We did try that one year, and the challenge with that is that we have, 40 kids are on our waitlist for the electrical program alone. And so we were tying up a full-time electrical teacher, but not allowing more kids in off of the waitlist of existing students. And it became our challenge with our families of a kind of questioning why we would be running an electrical program, an After Dark electrical program, when there are 40 kids that are already enrolled at Essex Tech full-time that couldn't get into the electrical program. So right now, we have horticulture, advanced manufacturing, construction and craft laborers, and health assisting.
Thank you. It certainly speaks to the need and the demand.
Yes.
Other councilors for Ed. Dr. Ricchio. Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just thank you for the presentation. I've been to the school a handful of times and you guys have a great facility and great programs and you're a real asset to the North Shore. So I'm not surprised that there is such great interest in the school. Just to make sure I kind of better understand how some of the infrastructure improvements that you guys have undertaken will relate to where enrollment is projected in the future. So in the chairman's comments, I believe you referenced something in like 580 slots that you're filling?
525.
525, okay. And that is a, would seem to mean that if the total enrollment's currently at 1,800 and that 525 continues, it'll grow at least another
2,200.
200-ish.
Mm-hmm.
Do the improvements that you referenced in particularly, I believe it was, you said a pretty sizable investment in one of the agricultural facilities?
Yes, the animal science programs.
Yes. Do you expect the 525 number to grow or is that already inclusive of some of these new facility improvements like the animal science program?
We have expanded, actually, the last, 525 kind of covers the existing expansion efforts.
Okay. So in the absence of any significant expansion, which it doesn't sound like is planned at this point, you would expect the incoming classes of the future to be around that 525 number going forward?
Yes. If it goes up, it would be approximately 25 students.
Okay. And that's like your high-end capacity would be that 550 number?
At this time, I mean, I can't say four years down the road. If MSBA gives us an expansion, you know, funding, I can't say that it would always be at 550. As you know, we have a very large campus. We have a campus of 166 acres, there's 20 buildings on our campus that we care for. So it is a significant campus. However, with the existing footprint and the expansion efforts that we have had, what happens is anytime you write a grant for the state, they want to, they're not going to give you money unless you expand. So any of the skills capital funding that comes out through the governor's office, the 75 million that is now in the budget or in the, at the House and the Senate right now, that money is for infrastructure and the expectation is that you increase access. It's not just about increasing equipment opportunities.
Okay. And like I said, I think it's, you guys are a great resource. I know your culinary students do an excellent job at our Kulanis Green Eggs and Ham breakfast every year.
Thank you.
Just trying to make sure I've got an idea in thinking about what the future impact is going to be on Beverly's budget. So thank you for that.
I will just add to that is, for example, the animal science expansion, we specifically targeted our agricultural students. So that increase in enrollment, we actually increased the agricultural students and not the tech students, if that makes sense.
Is there a, is there a reason that distinction is important for our perspective here as Beverly City councilors?
It is, because that 25 that I referenced could actually just only be 10 or 15 across the 17 communities and not the 25. Because we're going to increase enrollment of our out-of-district students as a result of the animal science program, because we're increasing our agricultural programs.
And that's because that's a unique program. That's kind of what you're doing.
Any of our agricultural programs.
All right. That makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Feldman, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. It's always, I always find this fascinating to see the evolution that vocational schools have really taken since I was in high school myself, and I'm really impressed with the leadership that you've shown in terms of, you know, trying to meet the need, the growing needs of the community, of our community, as well as the community and the nation as a whole. So thank you so much for that. And I see Essex Tech is one of the uniquely positioned type schools that also brings in revenue. There's the opportunity for a lot of the students and even like rentals, the new Larkin building, all of those things. And I was wondering how at the school that those revenue streams play into the budgeting because I know there's lots of grants and donations and things, but there's actual services they provide, the students provide. So I was just wondering if you could help me understand the revenue side of that and where that money goes and how it plays into the budget.
Sure. So aside from our out-of-district revenue, which are our agricultural students, the commissioner sets the rate for those each year. And we were able to go in front of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and ask for a capital. So in the regulations, you can have your out-of-district tuition and then you can have your special education additional based on the services that they receive, and then you can have a capital addition. So it is broken up in that way and you can see that they usually post it around the end of April and you can see that right on the DUCY website. And so we have to bill that amount. And so they look at our end-of-year report and then they determine the rate for that. So that, that's revenue for us. However, that revenue obviously gets pushed back into the students because that is what educates the other 360 students that are taking advantage of those agricultural programs. So a lot of that revenue just gets rolled back in. So you'll see this $41 million budget, that's our operational budget, Chapter 70, et cetera. The out-of-district rate obviously gets added to that. This $41 million, the Chapter 70 is based on not our agricultural students. So you would take the 1,864 minus the 360 and then you actually get the true enrollment of Essex North Shore, of how we're getting our funding stream. Because any of our out-of-district kids, actually, their communities get that Chapter 70 money, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. I think I was actually also interested in some of the services that they, that the students perform for, or rentals or things like that.
Yes, I was going to get into that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. So I was kind of doing the biggest pot first.
Okay.
The biggest pot is the out-of-district. However, the rest, yes, we rent, much like most school districts, we rent our fields, our gymnasiums, our classrooms. That is another revenue source as well. The Larkin, we will be renting and creating an apprenticeship slash culinary arts program for functions. The other revenue that comes in obviously gets put into our revenue, our night school revenue. So all of the night programs through our Night Hawks program is also a revenue source. And then the day-to-day operations, like our restaurant, for example, is open. We don't make any money on that, although we charge, but we charge at a very affordable rate. So we give sirloin steak tips for $7.95 and that includes a salad, a beverage, you know, a starch, a vegetable. So it's at a lower cost, but there is cost, like food waste, because they're grade, they're kids, they're grades 14 to 18 and they make mistakes and it's been plenty of times which they added salt to a bakery product instead of sugar and you throw the, you know, you throw the entire thing away. So we're, and then, as you know, disposables are at an all-time high. And because we're in Danvers, they did pass a guidance that we now, we can no longer use plastics, which that comes at a significant cost for us as well. The convenience of having a debit card or a credit card, we no longer, it used to be when I first started teaching in culinary that it was cash only, but now everybody's using cards. And so with that, we do incur a cost for that convenience. And at this time, we're not adding any sort of a service fee to it, but we may need to consider that because of the significant costs. In auto technology, for example, we do take in vehicles and we have the vehicles, they're going to be fixing my brakes on Monday. And so what they do is they cannot charge labor, but what they do is they charge parts plus 30%. That 30% covers all of the incidentals. So if you are getting your, any wheel weights, if you are getting your tires balanced or aligned and they have these little wheel weights, but they sell them in thousands, so you're not going to charge a half a penny for them. So they, they bill that 30% in for all of those small incidentals. But it also allows the program to maintain the equipment that they're working on, to purchase disposable, disposables that they need, you know, whether it's paper towels or rags. And then it also allows, if there's a purchase that they need to replace, and because they're taking care of customer cars, that is an acceptable purchase under that. However, that goes in front of our capital subcommittee, our capital planning subcommittee for approval. So they have to still justify. So any piece of equipment that is purchased out of a revolving account for that program does go through the capital planning committee. Did I, was I better?
Yes, no, thank you.
No, okay, thanks.
Thank you very much for that.
No worries.
You good, council?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions related to Essex Tech? Okay, thank you, Dr. Ricchio. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Come over anytime. We'd love to host you. I know Beverly loves to come, so we love to have you and we appreciate your partnership.
Go Hawks. Dr. Trocheck, welcome. Good, how are you?
I'm good. I'm going to hook my computer up if that's okay. Actually, Brian's going to hook it up hopefully. It's going to be the regular C.
Right.
Yeah.
How are you? Try that.
Thank you.
It's my third, I think it might be my third.
What'd you say?
My third coffee.
I know. I know.
No.
All right, that was actually good.
That went too many. Have a great one. Thank you.
Oh, of course. Okay. Brendan, were you thinking the same thing when you said the 1920 school year? And I was like, I know, it's 2019. It's 2020.
All right, Dr. Trocheck, the floor is yours. I don't know what's going on over there.
Everyone left.
It's been a long night, but we're very excited to have you. Thank you.
All right. Should I wait for folks to return or?
Uh, no, the floor is yours.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. And, and also thank you to the principals, leadership team, school committee, and everyone that contributed to the creation of this budget for their hard work throughout this process. It's important to, it is very important work and it was done with a lot of thought and care. Tonight, you will see and hear the recommendations of the school district budget for FY26. Throughout the process, our students were kept at the forefront of every decision that was made. Preserving the student experience was what was most important. Our job is to protect the children and ensure that we are providing the high-quality education they deserve in the Beverly Public Schools. Let me be clear, creating a budget in these complex times requires making some very difficult decisions. It is not lost on me that the district is requesting increases to our budget that include substantial and historic funding, and we are very appreciative of the support of our city leaders and the school committee. To provide some historical context, this graph shows a look back over my time in the district as both assistant superintendent and superintendent. I have seen firsthand the investments this community has made during that period, both financially and how it has improved outcomes for our students. We are proud of the diverse portfolio of student offerings that we have created. Throughout my time in the Beverly Public Schools, we have found ways to remain current and the Beverly Public Schools has been at the forefront of education, a leader in the North Shore in things like technology, innovative instruction, equity, and access to all students. We have always remained committed to responding to evolving student needs, whether through the pandemic, the return and recovery, or any other circumstances that have changed our young people's experiences. This budget continues to honor our commitments to providing student learning that is enriching, relevant, and diverse. So this chart on the screen reflects the distribution of the proposed FY26 budget. I want to, you all have hard copies, I think we handed them out, so you can follow along. This information is in more detail and some of these charts are included in there, so. So, but this is the distribution of the proposed FY26 budget across cost centers that make up the Beverly Public Schools. This includes all eight of our schools as well as our five district-wide operational categories. And you can see here, see here, this is just the breakdown and we've provided some historical context for you as you go from year to year between the actuals and then the budget that's proposed for this year. This is a broader summary of the proposed budget. It includes the proposed local city contribution and the Chapter 70 funding, as well as this year's increases in each category. As you can see, this budget reflects a 9% increase from our last year's appropriated budget. So our requested city contribution this year is $69,698,119. Right now, in the process of the legislative approval of budgets, it's in the Senate and it's, the proposed Chapter 70 money for Beverly is $15,674,495. So our total draft budget proposal for FY26 is $85,372,614. We broke that down just so that you could see what those increases look like. The city contribution increase from FY25 is $6.4,644,000, and the Chapter 70 increase is $665,550. That's a total budget increase over the FY25 budget, as you've heard a couple times this evening, of $7,105,550. And again, that's a 9% increase. The graph on this screen reflects the appropriated budget by function. You will note that 83% of the budget funds wages, benefits, and other compensation for our employees. 7% of the budget supports out-of-district special education tuition, leaving 10% to fund all the other needs of the district, including utilities, transportation, instructional materials, and other things. And then finally, I think this is my favorite slide, this slide represents our all-fund summary. So it once again highlights the growth of the FY26 budget by 9%, which followed an increase of 7.73% in FY25. Additionally, our total operating budget for FY26 is budgeted to be $114,355,381. And that is shown on the, on the graph on the right. This includes grants and revolving funds as well as local and state funds. And it depicts the breakdown of those funds as they contribute to the overall operations of our district. This is included in your budget book with a much more detail of each category of, of funding. So I know that that's, it's a great place for you to go to reflect. I don't want to go too fast through a lot of dense material, but you have the opportunity to kind of follow up with what's in your book. So this year, many of the challenges faced by the Beverly Public Schools throughout the budget process are not dissimilar to the challenges that are faced by other departments in the city or in communities across the Commonwealth. We acknowledge that there's been a substantial investment in the Beverly Public Schools and understand that the recent rate of increases are historic and unlikely to continue in the coming years. The building of this FY26 budget required hard work and planning by both district and city leadership over the past two years so that we are able to continue to honor our commitment to our students and the contractual obligations of our bargaining units. The incremental and compounding impact of budget drivers such as health insurance and out-of-district special education tuition increases can be hard to balance when the largest revenue driver is capped at 2.5% growth. We believe that the adjustments made in this budget are the first steps towards sustainability in our future budget processes. This, this slide highlights the areas that we targeted to find sustainable solutions to balancing the budget. So when we were going through the process, we were very mindful of areas that we needed to take a look at as we were building forward, always keeping in mind that things do compound and that as we grow, we need to make sure that we're putting our efforts in the right places. Every year, we always include enrollment adjustments. That means aligning staff and resources with the enrollment trends and the program needs. We look at resourcing of staff at the building level, ensuring that we allocate personnel based on student needs and priorities in buildings. Supplemental funding sources, we're actively pursuing grants, partnerships, and alternative revenue streams. District-wide resourcing review, we underwent a comprehensive analysis of expenditures to identify efficiencies and cost savings in all of our departments across the board. We prioritize student well-being by maintaining essential mental health services and intervention programs, and we leveraged natural staff turnover to realign positions without disrupting student learning. So these are the strategies that we utilized in our approach to making sure that we were So these are the strategies that we utilized in our approach to making sure that we were doing the best we could through the budget process. A review of the, is this one? Yep, so this slide summarizes the contractual, the contractual obligations of our FY26 budget. This is a breakdown, basically, of the contractual obligations that we have prior to anything that, they have no flexibility, they're tied into either collective bargaining agreements, individual contracts, or benefits that we have set forth for our employees. So increases for wages alone for all employees in the district was a 7% increase at $3,997,103. And our other compensation increases, including our benefits and deferred compensation and COLAs and all of those things, add to another $1.4 million for a total of $5,404,286. So those are just the contractual obligations. A review of our budget book reflects a reduction of positions, 35.12 FTEs. What it does not reflect is that even after those adjustments, the district has added more than 55 additional positions since FY20. Of these 55 positions, nearly 20 are instructional staff and 16 are related service providers, which include our mental health supports for our students. Each one of these positions were added over the course of the last few years to meet the changing needs of students in Beverly. And this is a very dense table that's broken down in much more detail within your book, should you want to take a look. But in general, one of the, one of the benefits of Esser funding was that it allowed the district to carry forward balances and entitlement grants and revolving funds. These balances were thoughtfully and deliberately used as one-time offsets during the FY25 budget to help cushion the transition away from the availability of supplemental funding, sometimes referred to as the Esser cliff. The FY26 budget was built with grant and revolving fund budget offsets equivalent to the corresponding anticipated revenues. This does, in many cases, reduce the number of positions that can be offset by these grants and funds. So I just want to bring to you that we had this discussion last year, when we were planning on doing that, I looked back at the meeting, just to kind of make sure that I wasn't making that up, and we did have a discussion at the, at last year's meeting, that we were intentionally identifying using some of our revolvings to make sure that we were stepping down from the work that we did utilizing the resources from Esser. So I want to thank you once again for the opportunity to present the budget proposal to you. It's a, it's a, I think, a fabulous document. We have, as you know, Jean retired, Emma has joined us this year. That budget book was a labor of love for her, it has quite a bit of information, and I think it's, it provides a lot of information to all of you, and even more depth than we have in the past. So I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Chirocek. So I think I'll take a shot at getting started tonight, and we'll open it up to questions. So I guess first, you know, I think the mayor references the challenges with the state funding formula, and I think we can all acknowledge that, that, you know, things aren't easy. He also referenced, as you did, the historic level of spending, which, you know, I appreciate and understand. But I guess my point that I made earlier tonight before you got here, I think, was, you know, just because it's the most ever in more than last year by a big amount, doesn't mean it's enough, and doesn't mean it's, it's enough to get the job done. And so I heard you, in your comments, talk a little bit about, you know, the goal of providing students high-quality education they deserve. And I guess my simple question is, is how are we doing with that? You know, did we have a good year in that? What areas are we challenged? I have some perspectives about that myself, but I guess from your point of view, are we, how are things?
Yeah, so I, we have, we have made some great strides in many areas. I point, I think during our budget presentation for school committee, we talked a little bit about the innovative pathways that we've created at the high school, and some of the opportunities that we've opened up and expanded through early college. We are early college designation in Beverly, that's an opportunity that we did not have before for our high school students. Our achievement scores have, have rebounded in our, particularly in our elementary schools, and that's a measure that Desi holds. So when you look at the work that has been done, we have come to a point of recovery, and we're now on moving forward in some of those years. I think our biggest challenge remains at the middle school. It is a really big building, and it has its own unique challenges, I think, as we go forward. I think that I've spent a lot of time working with Mrs. Oliver and talking with her. I know that we invested in a partnership for math, one of the areas that we identified that we were having some challenges in, where it was in math instruction, particularly in the seventh and eighth grades. And so she has brought in the TNTP, which is a partner that has come in and, in, within, and they have been working with us for the past two years. And we've seen growth in those areas and believe that, you know, we've identified some really great opportunities there, so.
So related to the middle school specifically, I agree with that assessment, by the way, that I think that the middle school is a challenge. And I, I'm a little disappointed that after the year we had last year in the, in the budget discussions in our community, that we're not having a bigger conversation about that decision we made 10 years ago to go to a five-day model. And, and I voted for that at the time, and I think it was the right thing to do at the time, but was it the right decision? And, and what is the data showing related to that? You know, my understanding is that we have the largest middle school in the state, if not the top.
We do. For, for a grade configuration of five through eight. So there are larger middle schools if you only look grades six through eight. So the grade configuration blends into that designation as the largest, so.
And related to the, the data I've seen on, on student performance related to MCAS, is it at our middle school level, we're performing below state averages? And so for me, you know, I'm trying to connect your budget, your discussion about historic levels of funding, funding, and trying to understand, you know, do we need to rethink, you know, what, what we put in place with the middle school? We're talking with the mayor about a $25 million City Hall project, we're talking, we talked last year about a $18 million HVAC for the library. Should we be talking about capital programs for, you know, for our schools? You know, do we need more room? Should we be reopening McEwen and looking at that? We just bought the Family Dollar store for 7.8 million. Is there an opportunity to rethink the big picture here? And I guess, you know, in looking at this budget, you know, I get where you're coming from and the tactical pieces to it, but I'm, I'm thinking from a strategy point of view, do we need to rethink this whole thing? Or, or are we just going to continue to try to get by, you know, on a, on a year-to-year? And I haven't heard any discussion about that, so I just, let's get your opinion on it.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I mean, I was not part of the decision-making for the middle school, I was a principal at Ayers when that decision was made. So however, I actually believe that we have a great opportunity at our middle school. I love the idea of being able to look perhaps at it as a lower school and an upper school. I believe that we probably need to concentrate on some of those things. I think that the, the instruction that I see, I walk through those classrooms, I'm in those buildings, I see great teachers with some great instruction. I think that in all communities across the state, the students that are sitting in our, our upper-middle classes right now, had a, the, the impact of the pandemic is still kind of far-reaching. We have to take a look at what that's doing and how we're doing that. We need to look closely at instruction, we need to look at tier-one instruction, we need to see what we're doing in those classes. Structurally, our building is, is sound, it has a great format, it was built to have a flexible learning environment, to have the opportunity to have classrooms that have teams of teachers, so students can access a broader range of program of studies. So I think there's a lot that we can think about it. I know that in the past couple of years, in terms of behavior and some of the social-emotional work, a great deal of work has gone on at the middle school, and I really commend a lot of the work that's been done there. There's been some work done with students around the house system, which I know, if you ever attended one of the sixth-grade rallies in the auditorium and, and watched what happened and the excitement and the engagement that we have there, that's really, it really shows, it really comes through. So, you know, I believe we're on the right trajectory, I think there's still work to be done, but I think, you know, I think we know and have targeted what needs to happen. We're looking at that tier-one instruction and how to help support teachers in that, in the delivery of that, and so I think we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, and then I guess just a further comment, I, you know, for me, you know, I look at the budget and I see the rollback or, or the, the cut of the assistant principal in the middle school, I reflect on the, the change to the honors curriculum at the middle school that, you know, I disagreed with a couple of years ago, I think it was honors math, maybe that was last year.
So we didn't, there was no changes to that?
Okay.
We actually, I believe, and I would have to defer to Mrs. Oliver, but I believe that actually more students participate in the honors math this year than they, than they have. And so the way that they restructured it allowed them to get into honors and Algebra I, so there were no changes made in that regard.
Okay, and then I, I did note the change, the two to, two and three teacher models at the, I think it was at, at the middle school level.
And we had a lot of conversation about that one. You know, so, so I, I will, I will say that, you know, we have, we have a lot of very difficult decisions to make. What we're trying to do is aim to make sure that we're making decisions that are, are good for kids, and sometimes it does impact the adults in the building and how they have to make some changes to some of their, some of their instruction and how it goes. I have great confidence that the, that the team that will be doing, a three-person team, will be able to kind of provide exactly what is needed. I know that is something that's been a, a discussion. At some level, decisions are made by the building principal, I support the building principal's decisions to do that, we work together to try to see how we can do it. So it, it is a, you know.
And I guess in my comment, I'm just trying to connect the dots between historic level of spending, you know, things are great, but, hey, we have challenges at the middle school, and oh, by the way, we're cutting this and we're changing that.
So I appreciate that, can I, but I would love to just point out, when we use this idea of historic, I, I had a graph up here that shows you what the percentage of increases were over time. I would, I would defer to try to find another community, not only in the North Shore, but almost in the eastern region of Massachusetts, that's looking at a 9% increase to their school budget. It, it's kind of ironic because I-
It's relative.
It is, well, it is and it isn't, because, you know, there is a responsibility to make sure that you don't just keep putting money towards something, but that you're making mindful decisions about where you're putting it, how you're putting it, and what supports you're putting in place to make sure that it's going well. So, you know, we believe that we've spent time on this budget, our principals have had a huge hand, we went through each building from the ground up, from zero bottom up. What do you need in your buildings to support your students? What are the student needs? What emerging needs do you have in your building? And how do you think you, what do you think you need to be able to support that? And so a lot of thought and a lot of time and effort went into the creation of this budget, and so I believe that we've been very thoughtful and very mindful about all of those things.
And I have no doubt that you have, and that's not a critique. At this point, I will open it up to colleagues, Council Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Chirocek, for that presentation. I have a handful of questions, but I'm going to just start with two areas for now. First, student achievement, because I know you had mentioned that in your response to the chairman here. It's my understanding that MCAS scores, at least proficient versus not proficient in terms of splitting at that simple level, are declining across grade levels.
Yep, so I would disagree. I said, we, if you look at our, our elementary levels, our elementary schools have all risen consistently, and through grade four, we're all in, in virtually the 70 to 78th percentile for ranking for schools across the district. Grades five and six at the middle school, I think, have been relatively level. We have had some challenges in grade seven and eight, and I believe that, you know, those are the areas that we're specifically addressing.
Okay, so, so with that-
And that's impacting the general look of the numbers across the board. But that, you know, I mean, I, again, I'm, I'm talking about the data as it sits and the numbers as they sit.
So if, and I appreciate that.
And the high school, actually, the high school had the largest increase in their MCAS scores in 11 years this year. So, so, you know, I mean, and we have a full presentation on MCAS data that's available if you go, this Dr. Flaherty presented to school committee in, in great detail around some of the work that we've done, and so, you know.
Okay, I'll make sure to look at that, but even still drilling into the points about the seventh and eighth grade scores, because I know you had mentioned the challenges we faced with the middle school in particular. In this budget, what tangible ways to address some of those issues are outlined? Is there an increase in positions targeted toward student achievement? I guess could you maybe elaborate on identifying that issue? How does this budget help to address it going forward?
So, so within this budget, that, within the middle school budget, there are shifting of, of supports, and they go where students' need is. So we, when we align, for example, the number of special education teachers we need in a grade level, Mrs. Oliver and her staff take the time to take a look at who is sitting in eighth grade, what do the IEPs in eighth grade call for, how much service is demanded for that? And, and therefore, we, and we go from there. There's also a continued partnership with the TNTP to do the work. We really believe that to raise achievement scores, it's really the work that gets done in the classroom, the tier-one instruction from teachers, and I believe the partnership with TNTP has brought a lot of opportunities for professional development. We have a math coach and a literacy coach in the building who are supporting the implementation of the new curricula that we have purchased. Remember, we purchased utilizing Esser funds over the past three years, new curriculum for math, new curriculum for ELA. So we're in the midst of implementing that new curriculum, and that also is part of the budget. So I think, you know.
Okay, and I, I think that was a good use of the Esser funds, and I'm glad to hear that. The next area I'd like to ask about is special education spending. And so as we all know, and this is kind of what Mayor Cahill and alluded to, and the need for more state support, but at the end of the day, whether a student is educated in district or out of district, Beverly pays for the cost of educating the student, and there's a, I think it's important that we prioritize the capacity of our in-district special education services, both because of the benefits to the student themselves, being able to stay in district with their peer students and not have to be transported to a, you know, a residential school or otherwise. But obviously, then, there's the financial impact to the district. And so I have heard from folks who are concerned that we don't have the capacity currently, and that if we're making cuts, will even further reduce the capacity of our in-district special education programs. And then, I think this is a little bit separate, but kind of related, the challenges that, on the general education side, we face from not having enough staff to support any intervention services or otherwise to work with students in district that may be dealing with behavioral issues. I'm not telling you anything you don't know on that end, but could you maybe elaborate on why you feel that we, why you are confident that we do have the support required for a robust in-district special education program? And some of the necessary intervention or other support staff?
Yep, so I, throughout this budget process, and I appreciate that question, every single building principal and assistant principals at the, at the middle and high school sat down and reviewed all of the IEPs that we have, what the schedules for every special education teacher look like, what the, what the caseloads look like for every individual learning center teacher, and made sure that the staffing that they recommended forward is appropriate for the number of students that are going to be in that grade level. As for our programs, we are, we probably have more programs in Beverly than any of our surrounding community. When I became superintendent, we had approximately 105 out-of-district students, we now have 71 out-of-district students. So we have built programming for our autism spectrum disorder students, we have programming for our language-based learning disabled students, we have programming for our emotional and behavioral students, and those programs are designed to keep Beverly kids in Beverly, because we have a very strong commitment that our Beverly students belong here. It also impacts, but has a budgetary impact, because an out-of-district placement, of which we have no control over the level of tuitions that are, are charged for us, is, you know, they're very high. And so we have built those programs, we do have in the budget added positions, actually two added positions to address those program areas, to support some of the work that's being done there. I believe that at the preschool level, we added some mental health supports for the preschool and sort of more in a, kind of a, a social-emotional realm to support families. And at the, at the elementary, K to eight level, we've added a coach, an AIM coach, meaning, so much like you think we have the math coaches that go in and help teachers, this is a coaching position to work specifically with the teachers of our autism spectrum disorder classrooms. So that, that was actually one of the added positions that we have in there. So we, the budget does reflect some, you know, some opportunities that we've recognized that we need to use for some of that. And so that's, I mean, those are just a couple examples, I don't know if that addresses what you were asking.
No, that is, and I guess, so it sounds like if someone were to challenge that the district is not well-resourced in its in-district special education program and other kind of support staff, it sounds like you'd contest that.
Well, so I, I, I would disagree. I, you know, I believe that we have worked really hard, we have, you know, we just had our tiered focus monitoring audit from the Department of Ed, it's sort of like the audit of all audits, they come in to a district, they walk through every classroom, they look at your facilities, they look at your procedures, they look at the caseloads, they look at the number of students, they look at all of those things, and we did not have a single finding on our TFM from the Department of Ed. So, you know.
And is that, is that an annual review that Desi does?
No, it's every, it's every three years.
Every three years.
Yeah, and it was conducted this past school year. I guess, you know, I would like to kind of comment, I know that at our recent school committee budget hearing, we had, heard from a number of really passionate educators and individuals about things that are most dear to them, and it covered the full spectrum of all of the changes that are in this budget. And we acknowledge their concerns and their commitment. And we acknowledge their concerns and their commitments, but this budget that's being brought forward aims kind of at balancing the needs of all students. So, we have, we have to balance students across the whole district. And that, so, for us, the work that we did was to take a look at how can we make sure that we, and we know we had to make some tough decisions. We made them. We made them in conjunction with input and understanding from the building leaders who understand the needs in their building, and so, we kind of, we worked hard to make sure that the changes didn't negatively impact any particular area of student. We were looking to balancing across the district, so...
Okay, I appreciate that, and since I have plenty of questions, I'll hold off for now and give my colleagues a chance to ask that.
Appreciate that, Counsel. Thank you. Counsel Flowers, President Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Turocek, for your presentation, and thank you for waiting till the end of the time tonight. I wonder, the first question I have, I realize, may not be completely fair, because you may not have the numbers in front of you, so I, if not, you know, we have more time to consider the budget, so I'd be happy just to get them at some point. I was just curious, I know you referenced 55, even with the reduction in full-time positions, 55 more positions in the public schools overall for FY '26 versus FY '20. I was just curious, just as I'm considering that, do you happen to have at your disposal, or could you provide us district enrollment for FY '20 versus FY '26? I'm just, I know, I, I understand that the positions are not necessarily going to correlate one-to-one, so it, I, I'm not thinking specifically about a direct ratio. I'm just curious to see sort of that same...
So, actually, we actually have presented in the, over the past couple of weeks, that direct ratio in a number of categories. So, I can show you that our, on page eight, if you look in your book, on page eight, at the top, it will show you the total district enrollment from 2013 to now.
Thank you.
And it is a relative straight line. It really has not shifted or changed much. It, you know, up a hundred, down a hundred, but in a district of 4,500 kids, that is a relatively stable line of enrollment.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I felt like I had seen that somewhere, so I appreciate you pointing me to the right, the right spot. I have a few other questions if I may.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sort of gonna circle back, I guess, to my, my questions that came up when we were just talking about the Essex Tech and the After Dark program, if, if I may. It looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like the VOC Ed line in the Beverly High School budget is suggested at a reduction for the coming school year. If I'm reading it right, it looks like it was at $8,000 for FY '25 and is proposed at $3,000?
Go ahead, you can take it if you want.
So, that is the supply lines for our in-district VOC programs. Our After Dark programs are actually under Teacher Specialist Section as contracted services.
Okay.
So, it's on page 45, second section from the bottom. They're listed as contracted services. That includes the tuition and transportation for our students enrolled in the After Dark programs, both at Essex Tech and at Salem Public Schools.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. My question, I think, for you, and it's partially an opinion question, I suppose, do we, I'm, I'm just thinking about, I know we're talking about meeting the needs of all students. It, it sounds like one of the things that we're observing is that there is a high demand for vocational, technical, and agricultural education that can't fully be met in the number of seats that Beverly students necessarily have at the school, and it sounds like, from the answer I received from Dr. Riccio about some shops are not available for After Dark, which is something I hadn't fully understood, but now do. Do you feel like between our seats at Essex North Shore, After Dark there, and Salem, we're able to meet that need? And, and if not, what could?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I, I love the conversation and discussion around the Essex Tech, first of all, and then After Dark secondarily, so, and I, Dr. Riccio mentioned it earlier. So, about four or five years ago, we were having the same discussion at this budget meeting where the question was, how come we can't get more kids into Essex Tech? And I believe Essex Tech is a really important part of our educational ecosystem for our students in Beverly. So, I don't look at that as competition, they shouldn't go to Essex Tech. I look at that as we purposefully have joined in that consortium of schools to be part of Essex Tech, because it provides a really important and relevant opportunity for students that live in Beverly. And so, we were averaging around 30 at the time. I will tell you the efforts that we took. We hired a guidance counselor for eighth grade at the middle, at the middle school. We put a specific focus on bringing some of the opportunities to life for students within that, some of the work. We have some fairs that happen. I looked to Chris, because he knows more about them, but we have career fairs and opportunities where folks, that, you know, students can see that. We actively encourage them to consider Essex Tech as an opportunity for them. We're now averaging 60 students a year, and that's great, except for, as I think Mr. St. Hilaire pointed out, it's, it comes at a cost, right? It's a, it's an expense that, that the city, that it comes out of, and it hits the budget line. It's part of that 114 million, but it hits our budget line in a different place on, in a different part of the budget. So, in terms of After Dark, we pursued that because we were having 180 students apply for Essex Tech and 60 got in, so that left 120 that we knew had at least had an idea that they thought they might want to pursue that career and technical opportunity. The After Dark program serves, I think, about 40 students right now. However, it is limited in the, in the certain shops that are open. It's by availability, basically, and I think Heidi did a really nice job of explaining that they can't, they're not gonna fill their electrical with After Dark students if they have a waiting list for their own students. We then opened up the opportunity to go to Salem, because Salem has their, a shop, and we are the first public, public partnership for After Dark programming in Massachusetts. Again, Salem is limited in the shops that they offer. They don't even, they don't have the breadth of shops that Essex Tech have. However, it, we found that it fits a really nice niche in Beverly, and it allows a number of students to be extremely successful, and we've had, we had a presentation at one of our FNF meetings where they came forward and shared that with us. In terms of what we're doing in Beverly to kind of, so what about the rest of them, right? So, what are they gonna do? One of the things that we have done is we applied for and became designated as an innovative pathways district. Now, that does not mean Chapter 74 shops. It's really, you know, it's taking a look at, at various disciplines, but it does help target students into areas that are a little bit more non-traditional than, so we do have, education is one of the pathways. Business is a continuing pathway that we've always had. Earth science is a new pathway that we've opened up. So, we're, we're kind of trying to work through that to fill the bill. Beverly made a decision, I don't know how many years ago, to close the, the VOC school at the high school, when either when they, it was even before we built a new high school, I think, that that, that the vocational school was closed. And so, the process to reopen any of those kinds of programs, we talked about the MSBA process. It would require a huge commitment in terms of a building project and a decision to take that on, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how, how that process would go and how quickly it would be received. So, again, we're, we're doing everything we can to kind of expand, and, and we do not have kids that want to go into After Dark that don't get in, but it's limited as to the, the shops that are available. So, she mentioned the four they have. We have over, I, we have a medical assisting. It's a little different than their health assisting, but it's also medical assisting. We have automotive and technology at Salem that they don't have at Essex Tech, so that offers yet another opportunity for some of our students. So, you know, we're continuing, I, I believe, I believe that, that it fits a really nice need for our students, and so we'll continue to work with Essex Tech to make sure that we can get as many students in as we can. By the same token, work to kind of develop some programs for ourselves at Beverly High School.
Thank you. Two more if I may, I'll be brief.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Turocek.
Yep.
The, another question that I had requires, I think, I said this to Mr. Perry earlier, but for him, a bit of a crystal ball. I understand you really can't, you cannot tell us with certainty what will happen. I think none of us can. But I wonder what concerns you have, if any, you know, thinking about different kinds of federal education grants or federal funding that comes to municipalities through the state?
Yep.
I think it's undeniable that we can see that there is potential impact at the Department of Education at the federal level, potential impact of federal funds for public education. When you look at this budget, do you have concerns looking forward in terms of where that might pinch or where we might need to pivot if those funds...
Yeah, so, we, we in Beverly, we, we receive our entitlement federal funds for Titles I, II, III, and IV. We're, I feeling, not, no crystal ball, no promises, but we're feeling rather confident around the Title I funding, right? And we get about $600,000 in Title I funding. That Title I funding supports a lot of the, some of the support services at the middle school. So, things that aren't in the budget but are in Title I funding, reading teachers, you know, the math instructional coaches, the director of restorative practices, those folks are all funded through that Title I funding process. Our Title II, III, and IV, we're, I don't have the same level of confidence, particularly Title III, which is our English learner grant, I think, but we, it's not large, and we are, have been very careful about what we, what we're relying upon it for. I don't know if you want to add to that any other, the IDEA and...
Yeah, the IDEA money, we get about $1.6 million from, and that supports our special education programs. Because we also have laws at the state level that are very similar to the laws that exist at the federal level, that should that money disappear, because those laws exist at the state level, we would then get into a situation of the possibility of an unfunded mandate at the state level, which would then likely result in some sort of need and, from level of support from the state. So, there's, of course, an amount of concern, because we do rely heavily on those funds to make sure that we're able to support our students on IEPs. But I do believe that, I'm, I'm not currently losing sleep at night about it.
Thank you. I'll endeavor also not to then.
Okay.
This, this is my last question, and then I'll turn it back to the chair, but I, I understand and have heard you note, you know, several times, that this budget's been thoughtfully put together and really does try to address the needs of students across, across need levels, and I respect that. I'm wondering if you were asked, though, where does this budget pinch for you? If you could add something, what would you want to add?
If I could add something? I, so I was asked that question, I think, at the joint council when we met before. I, I would probably look to some supports for some of the MTS-S work that we do, whether that be, you know, maybe additional literacy tutors at the middle school. I think that's an area that we are looking and exploring grant opportunities to be able to do. I might talk about some work for continued intervention supports, you know, at, at some of the buildings, some of the elementary schools, or some of the areas. Those would be the, the real areas that I would, that I have, you know, the, the place that I would kind of look to, to try to strengthen some of those supports. We've been so fortunate to have the ESSR funding, so that our curriculum is strong. And again, you know, the implementation of curriculum, I, I know there's a lot of questions and, and comments about the achievement scores. When you implement a new curriculum, there's all, it takes time, and so we're only in year three of our math curriculum implementation and year two of the literacy implementation at the middle school. At the elementary, we're a little further along, and we've seen an absolute connection between the implementation of our wit and wisdom program and the relative MCAS scores, at least in last year's scores. We don't have this year's scores yet, but, you know, and again, if there's interruptions to instruction throughout the year, it's a real problem. And so, if we're, if, if, when we have big interruptions, sometimes that's gonna have a negative impact. The other thing that, to keep in mind, and I won't be here to talk to you about MCAS next year, but a, a big factor in the MCAS accountability scoring is attendance, and we're going to be heavily impacted by that due to the relatively challenging makeup days that we had. The, the state will not discount those for us, and so when we only have 50% attendance on those days, that will, we, we receive a qualitative increase to the accountability factor, right? So, it's a number, a quantitative number that gets added in. Every school got probably four points for increasing attendance last year, because it was one of our, one of our real focus areas. We will not be receiving those four points probably in any of our schools, maybe a couple of the elementary schools that manage to kind of keep their attendance numbers high. The high school, no way. Middle school, no way. And that is, that is going to impact the, the accountability and the percentile scores that you see. It's not gonna, it's, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna be able to use apples-to-apples to look for a trajectory of improvement. So, I just put that on your radar while I can, so...
Thank you. All set, President?
Yes, thank you.
I saw Counsel Feldman first, and then we'll go to you, Counsel Allison.
Yes, thank you, and thank you so much for the presentation and the budget book. I know how much work goes into this, so I really, really appreciate it.
Give all the credit to Emma. She's been amazing, and it really was, you know, a great, a great project, so...
So, kind of more of a comment than a question, I guess, but similar to Chairman St. Hilaire, I was, I'm, I'm concerned at looking at the big picture, you know, going forward, and I used to work in nonprofits, and they function a lot like the budgets of, of city government in terms of tight constraints and always thinking of ways, like your approach to budgeting and with really limited resources and growing needs. So, there's like two mindsets of that type of budgeting, and there is, you can either find ways to do more with less and keep cutting, or you can find a way to get more. And I've always been of the mindset of find a way to get more revenue and find a way to fund the needs that we have, that our district has. And I'm, I'm chairman of the Financial Forecasting Committee, and I've been for the last several years, and so I, I'm fully aware of the needs and the growing needs and them outpacing. And so, similar to President Flowers' question about, you know, where would you find that pinch? I would love the opportunity, as us, as city councilors and the council as a whole, I would love the opportunity to, in the future, look at ways that we can support funding a budget that meets the needs of the community as a whole. I don't want, I like, I, it, it breaks my heart to hear that, you know, we're not able to, with the funding constraints that we have, to necessarily meet everyone's needs, including both students and teachers and the classroom supports that we need. So, I'm, I'm truly interested in the opportunity going forward, because I, I understand that revenue and looking at additional sources of revenue on the municipal side is going to be really tough, and it's hard work, but as I consider that our job to find a way to fund and keep the services that our entire community needs, fully funded, and to that end, I would, I would hope, hope in the, in the future with, and I know, and I, I understand you're retiring this year, and I, I'm looking, more looking forward, and I'm welcoming the opportunity to hear ideas of where we, we would fund the budget if we had that extra money to work with.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, I think, I feel sort of compelled to, to just share with all of you. We keep talking about we need more supports, we need more people. We have added, we have four full-time EL teachers at the, at middle school this year. Due to enrollment, we might go down to three, but that, those were added positions in the last four years. We've increased our special education staff across the district by, I think, 18, 18 positions in the last four years. We've added 18 positions for special education in the last four years. We have added school adjustment counselors. We have at, what's the number for that? 16? 18, 18 staff members for mental health supports in the last four years. So, I keep hearing, we need more supports. We have added more supports. What we really, and we need to continue to make sure we're doing what we're doing, but those positions are real. We have, we spent and looked and have done a tremendous amount of work identifying, what do we need for our EL population? What do we need for our special education population? What do we need for the social-emotional needs for the students in our district? So, sometimes when I hear the questions, it feels like everyone thinks we haven't done anything and that we haven't added any of those supports. We have increased exponentially those numbers in those particular areas. Those are the supports that we're looking for and that we're trying to, you know, to, to provide for the meet, to meet the student need that we see, particularly at the middle school. And those numbers for the middle school are, a, a good majority of those positions were at the middle school. So, you know, I don't want it to appear as if we haven't addressed student need at all and that we're just, woo-hoo, we're good to go, we don't need anything, we're all good people. We, we continue to review and look at, we've added director of restorative practices, because we believe that at the middle school, we wanted to work on, how do we teach and use the opportunity to educate students on how to behave in a classroom, or how to behave in society, or how to do those things, rather than be a, take a punitive reactive approach to the things that they're doing? We have added two instructional coaches in that building to address the implementation of curriculum that will directly impact student achievement. We had that, the one assistant... We had, that the one assistant principal position that we have reduced was an add during ESAR that we knew we were adding, that we knew we would have to take away. We believe, and, and Mrs. Oliver made the determination that, that she can have assistant principal for five and six, one for seven and one for eight, with a building principal. That's, that staffing is equivalent to or higher than all of the surrounding communities that are around here. So I, I just sometimes feel as if we, we don't see the forest for the trees because we have done a lot of those things. We have brought 29 students back in district over the last four years to be part of our programs. We have a robust program in preschool and in the elementary level for autism spectrum disorder students. We keep them in district. We sometimes get them back into regular classes. So there is great work being done in our schools. And so I, I just wanted to, I feel compelled to at least make that statement before I walk out the door here because I think it's important for you all to recognize. And I guess I would also say, we, I would welcome any of you to reach out to me and I'm happy to show you some of the programs that we have in our district and share, well, only in the next few days, but I'm sure the new guy will do it as well. But, you know, I would, I would, I would welcome that. So I just.
So Dr. Trujic, if I could jump in there. So I voted against the last two city budgets largely because I, I didn't think that, that it accurately reflected the priorities of our city. When I, I look at your school department budget, I don't look at it as, you know, this is all we have to give you. I look at it as, we have $173 million city budget and we, we're choosing to allocate X amount to our, to our school department. We just asked and had a discussion with the mayor about staffing in the executive office. And he defended the, the positions of the two sustainability directors and constituent services aide and his travel expenses to Miami. But to me, these are, these are things that aren't as important as our schools. And to me, we make decisions all the time about funding all sorts of stuff, whether it be electric vehicles and buses or, you know, whatever it might be. So I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, is does this budget, and I guess you're, you know, can't really put you on the spot like this, but you know, you would take more money, right? And you put it to good use.
Sure. Where's Linda? Who would say no to free money?
And I guess furthermore.
When we get grants, that's the mantra that we use. Who would say no to free money?
But I guess in investing resources, right, I would want to know, what is the outcome that we're trying to achieve? And when I hear you say that, that, you know, absenteeism is impacting performance in our schools and said they're going to decline again next year and, and it's sort of like, well, what is the end game here? You know, I think we all want to see.
Well, we need kids in schools every day. And so we need kids in school every day and we've worked really hard, so again, there's a.
But you've been declining before this year.
But there is, but that was an investment that we made. So I, I, I would bring you back to the City Connects program that we brought in that was specifically focused on providing resources for our families within the community to target particular focus areas. So attendance was in particular. If a student isn't in school, they're not learning.
So you're talking about this year though, right? The MCAS score, is that what you're referring to? Is, is the, the, the attendance in class this year, right?
No, I, so I'm, I'm referring to the fact that with 12 makeup days that we had due to the strike.
No, I understand that.
We, we had.
But what I'm suggesting is it's been a longer than a one-year issue. I don't think this is just.
I, I, so I would, I would respectfully take a look at the trajectory of our scores as we go over from recovery through the pandemic.
So our middle school, we're just having a one-year blip and you think everything's good?
Nope. But, but I will tell you that we were, our efforts toward recovery from the pandemic were moving in a positive trajectory.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Houseman, did you?
I, I wanted to defer to Counselor Feldman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I cut you off? I apologize.
Okay. So, yes, Dr. Trujic, a couple of things. One is thank you for your presentation this evening and thank you for your years of service in the Beverly Public School system. It's appreciated. A couple of housekeeping issues. One is will you please forward this PowerPoint to the city clerk for us to take a look at?
Yeah, I'll have Donna do that in the morning.
Secondly, I believe in your conversation with Counselor Sweeney, you made reference, maybe with the chair, about Dr. Flaherty's MCAS presentation. When and where on Bev camera otherwise can I view that?
I will try to get Donna to find the link and forward you that along with the presentation.
I, I would appreciate it. That'd be very helpful. So now to my question. And it's really anecdotal and it's just sort of a, a sliver or subset of some of the broader questions that have been asked here. But my daughter, my last BHS child graduated in the old high school in 2009. So I don't have much of experience, I have no experience really with these two new schools. And there was discussion about the configuration of the middle school. So anecdotally, what I have heard is that, well, let me back up. The middle school was specifically designed to provide project-based learning. That was the, the, the theme or the, you know, school of thought about how to, how to best move forward. And the school was designed specifically to meet that philosophy of teaching. What I have heard anecdotally is that that's not really how the middle school is being used now due to any one of a number of issues, staffing issues or so forth, about which I don't have any direct knowledge. Okay? So I, I'd like you to try to talk a little bit about how the middle school is being used for project-based learning. What, what are the shortcomings that the school is experiencing given, you know, I mean, there was discussion about, it's one of the largest schools in Commonwealth that has, you said, particular challenges relating to its layout. Can you just talk about project-based learning and the middle school?
Yeah, thank you. First, let me clarify this note. I don't think there's a challenge to the layout. I, I think, and I, I love the question because it actually brings me back to some of the work that we did. And I, again, was not in this role, I was in the assistant superintendent role, but there was a, a whole program design that was submitted as part of the building, right? And so project-based learning was a focus, but it was also a, the building was designed to hopefully flow, to allow flexibility in learning. And when we originally opened the building, the teachers worked on how they would, they wanted flexible scheduling and, and the ability to do some of those things. I will point out that in March of 2020, there was a slight hiccup in the trajectory of education in Massachusetts and across the country. And so the pandemic had a huge impact on the work that had been started. And the, and I believe the teachers at the middle school were, were working really hard and doing a great job in, in identifying and, and creating units that included some really great project-based learning. Then the school opened in a hybrid model with eight kids in a classroom and they weren't to be within eight feet of each other. So we had an entire year of disruption that way. We then came back and I would say, and I think any educator that you speak to, any administrator that you speak to, anyone that's involved in schools, the most difficult and challenging year was returning the second year when we were back to normal, which was nothing like normal. We had students who hadn't been in schools for two years. I don't want to lament the pandemic to you, but it was a, I, I think sometimes we think that it's going to go away and that we're going to move forward very quickly.
It's a long tail.
And so then we came back and then, you know, trying to get back on track and moving forward. I would say that, again, situations and circumstances of this past school year created a huge interruption to some of the flow that we might've had in recovering some of those things as well. So my hope for Beverly is that as you move forward, that, you know, we can get back to what we devote ourselves to all our lives, which is teaching and learning and looking out for strong outcomes for students and working together to be able to do that. So that's my hope for Beverly as we move forward. I, I can't give specifics to individual things. This has been a very tumultuous time in our country and in the world, and it's been a challenging five years for education. So there's a law, there, and Beverly itself has grown into this beautifully diverse community that is very different than it was 10 years ago, which we all embrace and in, in, you know, are appreciative of, but it also changes, you know, and it requires us to look and think differently about how we do things.
If I may, Chair.
Please.
Just to follow up. So would you say, sort of narrowly speaking, we are not really back to project-based learning?
So that's a really hard question. Project-based learning is something that a teacher would implement within their classroom, within a unit. So, you know, a, a, a unit of study in social studies might involve, I would say, Mr. Malanson, excavating bones out of some sand or, or putty, of which I've seen you do, right? And, and have, bringing students in to have some hands-on learning that are part of the curricula that we're doing, adding to it. We still continue to work with our professional development for teachers to have them build units. And I would say that in each one of our buildings, each student probably at least experiences one or more opportunities for project-based learning. It looks different. I saw fifth, sixth grade students dissecting, usually utilizing, looking at bone, I'm trying to think of Beth Spoon's operation, Dr. Spoon was walking around. We create opportunities for learning for kids and that's done by teachers and that teachers do that work. Project-based learning isn't like a rubber stamp that you say, we're just going to do it. It takes building, it takes, you know, it takes professional development around the curriculum. We implemented a whole new reading program. So new projects based upon some of those novels will probably emerge over the next few years. But it emerges from the great work that our teachers do. And, you know, I think throughout this whole thing, I, I, I stand here and I get, trying not to get defensive about MCAS scores because I know the work that's being done in classrooms by our teachers every day, they're, they're not dialing it in. They're showing up every day, they're standing in front of kids, they're working through a myriad of challenges and they're still working to deliver really strong, relevant instruction. And so project-based learning is a great way to do that. And I know that our teachers are still doing that in our classrooms. So I wouldn't say it's abandoned. I would, I would say that you would have to look individually at what classrooms are doing to identify what aspect of the curriculum in that year involved a project-based learning experiment. So it wasn't that we're going to turn into a charter school that was all project-based learning. We still have the core curriculum that we're administering. We're still, we still have math and science and social studies and literacy that, you know, that we're addressing. We still have foreign language that we teach. We have STEAM and STEM and Phys Ed and wellness and art and music and band and chorus and all of those other things that take place in our schools.
I'd like to follow up with you more on it, but I want to defer to my colleagues with their questions.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Counselor Spang. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Trujic. I echo everyone's appreciation for your time tonight and with the district. And I just wanted to pose the question a slightly different way. We all received a chart today with hours that teachers may have been absent throughout the year with it being either covered by a para or not covered. And so I, I know that substitutes is a big issue. I know you guys spoke about that during the budget process. But I wonder if, it sounds at least like para professionals are sometimes used to cover as substitutes when there's not a substitute available. Are there other solutions for that? And I know one of the things the school committee does is try to increase the amount of pay for substitutes to help recruit more, but just if there's any other creative.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that question. Actually, we had a long discussion at FNF over this as well. So, you know, some of the challenges, we have 87 subs on our sub list, 45 to 50 of which work every day. Some of them will only work in certain buildings. We have done, we are, we are topping the, around our surrounding communities in pay and what we do. One of the challenges that we have is that when an excessive number of teachers are out on a particular day, we couldn't ever have enough subs to cover all that. And we do have to provide proper supervision for our, for our students. So we have to do something different around that. We have made some movements forward. I know that Mrs. Oliver has worked on creating a schedule going into next year at the middle school that provides an opportunity for teachers to attend meetings as part of their duty block rather than being pulled out of their classroom. The current schedule doesn't allow for meetings to take place outside of already scheduled instructional time. So she's made adjustments and proposed a new schedule that we'll be implementing into September that will allow for, instead of having to cover for teachers who are in meetings, that the meetings will take place when they're not scheduled to be somewhere else. We, you know, we, we have, if everyone's in, we have the right staffing. But if, if people are absent, it's our job or incumbent to cover them and to make sure that they're there. If you're a special education teacher and you're absent and you're supposed to be providing specially-designed instruction under your license for special education, it's hard to, it's hard for us to provide that service for you. Same thing if you're a speech therapist or if you're in OT, you have a specialized license. So, you know, again, there are many different things that get in the way. I would say that attendance has, has been challenging and so we continue to work through it. The final opportunity that we've taken advantage of is we've engaged a new, or we're engaging a new opportunity for how we're utilizing a substitute scheduling. So there's, within the, within the operations office, looking at substitute scheduling a little bit differently. So those are some of the things. We continue to advertise, we continue to hire. We have a, a better opportunity from May 15th till June when our college kids come home and we can engage them sometimes a, a little bit in December. We have a better opportunity because we have more folks home. But we continue to work on it. And we, we've had a lot of discussion, is it pay? Is it the number of folks that we have? However, the substitute shortage is not a Beverly situation. It's a situation across all of the districts around. So particularly in the larger cities, it's harder to find substitutes, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen, then Madam President.
Thank you. And a, a lot of my general questions have been answered, so I just want to echo the, the thanks and then follow up a little bit on the staffing numbers and how we interpret them. Because I think one of the challenges is we tend to, just human nature, like fill in the gaps where there are gaps. So I know for me, looking through, I was seeing, you know, reductions in things like the BPS Connects coordinators, the instructional coaches, paras, learning center teachers. And, and the explanations accompanying them are pretty standard, changes in the building or enrollment changes. But some of the schools have increasing enrollment in those cuts, some have decreasing enrollments in those cuts. So I think one of the things that, that might be helpful is just that fuller explanation of how each building is evolving and how those needs are evolving. And then I found it helpful too, to think about contextualizing the, the numbers because we hear 35 fewer positions from last year, but that that's 55 staff, different types of, who's counted in those numbers perhaps, but from another single point in time. And it might be helpful to be able to see that full trend of where we really were able to surge up some of the support services that were needed. Yep. Some of those budgeted in those increases year by year of city funds and some from external sources. There's a great table on page 73 of the budgeted FTEs by category. How many are in the appropriated budget and how many are from other sources? Presumably those are the, the grants revolving funds, other, other program areas. Being able to see that compared to other years might be helpful too, so that we can help see that, that evolution. And I think it is clear from both the questions and the, the experience you're sharing back that really our schools have transformed multiple times over the last five to 10 years. And the student needs have changed. So while the enrollment has been relatively steady, changing by up to 200 students in a given, you know, over a couple of years, depending where you, you pick those points, but relatively steady, but how learning is happening and what's needed in each building has changed significantly. So being able to track those changes a little more fully over time, when we hear like a comparison point and a different comparison point that are apples to oranges but used in the same conversation, it can be harder. So I don't know if it's possible to get some of those types of breakdowns that are in, at a single point in time over multiple years.
I'll have to check and work with the folks to make sure that we have the data to be able to do it that way for you and quickly turn it around for you. I'm not, if you, perhaps we can, maybe you can send me an email and we can take a look at what that is. I would like to speak to one of the things that you, a few of the things that you said. First of all, so the BPS Connects, for example, right? So the, the scenario with that, we entered into a partnership with BC four years, three years ago, at this time, four years, almost four years ago. And we elected through ESAR funding and, and, and looking at the needs that we had to enter into a partnership with them. They had a formulated program that was very prescriptive. And, and we chose in order to make sure that we were giving it our full commitment to implement it with fidelity. The program they had designed did not take into consideration whether there already was a full-time school adjustment counselor in a building or not, right? But we chose. But we chose to kind of go all in to make sure, and with the idea that we would work with them for two years, which we did, implementing with fidelity, utilizing their dashboard, utilizing their staffing recommendations, K to 12, which, you know, the program really was built for K to six. It's really a K to six program, but we extended it with their help through 12, because we wanted to get every, every child in Beverly the opportunity to kind of have some data collected on them and make sure that we weren't, didn't have folks that were falling through the cracks. With the intention that we would then spend this past year looking at what does that staffing mean for us? What areas do we need? Do certain buildings have different level of need in different areas than others? Again, I went through a process with each building principal to make sure they were taking a look at their individual building. Every building in Beverly is different. You have Cove School that has huge, a huge AIM program. Uh, they elected to keep, we, we elected to remain two full-time school adjustment councils, one the City Connex and one a school adjustment council, because the needs in that building required it. Hannah School does not have the same need in their building, so we dropped that to a .5. And so we made adjustments that were based on what is the student need in that building? And we had, we planned on doing that all along. So reductions in City Connex, our BPS Connections, as we call it now, were purposeful. They were made, and so that idea about enrollments and how they align with different things. You mentioned another one, um, I can't remember what the other category that you had, you said, uh, BPS Connections and-
The Learning Center instructional teachers-
Yeah, and so Learning Center, and so Learning Center teachers is a great example. Our elementary schools had a really large fourth grade, and they graduated out a large fourth grade the year before. The number of students that were being serviced by the number of teachers now that are left in the building doesn't warrant three, in some buildings, it didn't warrant that additional third teacher. So we made that reduction in that teacher because we didn't need it in that building anymore, looking at the service delivery that has to be provided in that building. Again, those are some of the, we do those enrollment kinds of determinations every year. Sometimes in some buildings, there are four third grades and, um, the next year there are only three third grades because there were fewer children in second grade. So a lot of the adjusts, some, many of those adjustments come from that.
And, and that makes sense, and I know we see that every year. I just was struggling with multiple buildings where the total number of students increased and positions like that decreased with the explanation enrollment explains it.
Right. So well, if you're a special education teacher, you're servicing students that are on IEPs, so the number of students on IEPs in that building may go down while the number of students that go to that school may go up. So that, that is, it does look, I'm sure, like, whoa, how did that happen? But that is really, you know, the scenario that's going on.
Great. And so I think part of the point is the, the more those explanations can be shared, the fewer conclusions we'll jump to if we're not deep in the weeds.
And, and again, not to give everybody extra homework, but we did a really comprehensive budget presentation for school committee, and each one of those areas, each one of those areas were, did, you know, had discussion and conversation and were given, you know, information in more detail. So I'm happy to, you know, share those links as well if you want.
That's great. I think only last, um, point slash question, one of the things that I, I really like in the Essex Tech budget book every year is their table of kind of what we started with in thinking about how we could fully fund everything we would love to do, and then how throughout each of those discussions in the budget process, in that timeline, things get carved out, and it's really clear what, what they are. And it lands at a point that feels like it fits within the overall picture of, of what funding the communities can, you know, are willing to invest. Um, and I think one of the frustrations with the, the school budget process here has been a, a perception that there's sort of, we're starting at that bottom figure, and going through that process of thinking about, well, that means we can't, we can't afford to add this, or we can't afford to keep that, or we can't afford to replace that grant that's going away with new funding from, from other city sources. But that part isn't always clear, because there isn't that-
Well, that process happens, and actually I meet individually with each school committee member and walk through that with them. So, you know, we start with, if you could, who just asked me if I could have more money? If we could have, you could have everything you wanted, what is it? And, and it comes up with a number. That isn't the number that we sent forward. We then work through that and then say, all right, if you want this, if your priority is an AIM coach, a coach to work with your AIM teachers, how can we, within the constraints? I mean, there is a level in the role of superintendent that I do have to be fiscally responsible, and, and, you know, we, we recognize that we're one department in the city, and, you know, we do want, we do want to make sure that we're doing right by our students, but also, you know, working within the community that we live and the decisions all, that all have to be made. So we, that we do have that same process. I, I, I don't know that it would belong in the budget book. I think it's the work of the school committee that we have. We have a school committee that, that we sit with, and I meet individually and go line by line through every item with them. Um, they are very well aware of what we have and how we do it, and so, uh, you know, I guess, I just want you to know, we do have that process. We do the same process.
Yeah, so I guess I, I would say I believe it does belong in the budget book, or at least in a place where any resident who wants to see some version of that can, can relatively easily see it. And I, I know there's, there's reasons why you might not want to put, you know, as many lines as are in the version we, we got from Essex Tech, but I think seeing some, some of the trade-offs we're making when we fund at one level rather than another level is, is really important, and, and not to say we wouldn't end at exactly the same place for exactly the same reasons, but since it's all of our money, I think it, it does belong in that.
So I would point anybody who's interested in that level of depth of conversation to the budget page on the Beverly Schools website, which has hyperlinks to each one of the school committee meetings and the finance and facility subcommittee meetings where we had those conversations in deep detail. So back in January, we brought forward exactly that information to the school committee. This is the cost of all of those things. And then brought it back two, three, four times as we talked about how we made those adjustments and worked through those changes and what those, some of those trade-offs were and those exchanges were. So if anybody's interested in that level of detail, because again, it comes often with a lot of narrative to understand the nuance. And so, right, this book will be twice as long to be able to capture all of the nuance that is important to provide appropriate context. So if anybody is interested in that level of detail, I would point them to the Beverly Public Schools budget page.
The link is also in the budget page.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, and as we all know, like, it's this balance between making things digestible and burying people in details. And so I think having, you know, the level of summarization that you're able to do for the ending point, some version of that for one or two of the other points along that thread would be really, really helpful for people to understand how we're getting here and what else it would, it would look like, so that we're not asking the question, if you had all the money in the world, what would, what would it be tonight? But it's, it's part of the way that the numbers are presented. And, and even that, you know, there are communities in which school committees do end up asking for more than they know will fit in the budget, and, and mayors or city councils have to do some of that prioritization. And we typically don't land there. It sounds like the next couple of budget years are gonna be harder overall, so having that, that full set of information from departments, I think, is, is really helpful, particularly from the biggest department.
President Flowers was next, and we'll go this way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I, this is just a bit of an aside, if I may, through you to Counselor Housman. I have been pondering since your line of questioning about project-based learning. I think one of the, one of the things that I think I hear in our conversation tonight, although we're coming from lots of different directions, and I include Dr. Trocheck's answers to us in that, that there's a real, we have a, a high value on our public schools, that we place on our public schools, and we want, we collectively are trying to figure out how we can support them to be the best that they can be, and I think that's positive. Um, that's not the part that's through, through you, Mr. Chair, to, to you, but Counselor Housman, I, I do have a BMS eighth grader, and so just, wanted just to share that I think, um, because you were asking, I've been struck by, and I think it's, it's worth just lifting up, I think it's, it's in this budget book, it's in our conversation, it's in everything that we've been saying, but our educators in Beverly are such an amazing resource, and, um, I've been struck by some of the creative things that have been happening for my eighth grader this year. I, I could stretch back over the other years, but just, um, thinking about project, kind of hands-on things that he's done. He's dissected DNA from a strawberry, made his own bath bomb, um, done really amazing project-based learning about a book that I think is a really important book, The House on Mango Street, um, which I got so excited that they were reading that his ELE teacher and I were emailing back and forth so much that he quickly got annoyed at me, um, because I was like, oh, Mrs. McAfee told me that you have homework. Um, but just, just to give a sense of some of the, the creativity that I think it's in this budget book, but it's hard to see in the budget book, and I know you, I think that's sort of what you were asking for. Um, and I, I just wanted to lift that up. You know, they, a world language market where students made their own shops and, uh, sold things and had to speak in their language they were learning for 20 minutes. I don't know, Emmett bought two tattoos from students speaking French. So, um, just, I, I think as we're talking about all of this, I just wanted to lift up the resource that we have in our educators and, um, some of the creative things that are happening that are definitely, they're in these numbers, but we don't see them easily. And, and since you had asked, I just wanted to reflect some of that, so thank you.
And if I may, probably going out on a limb going here, but I'm gonna go here anyway because I'm retiring, so, um, I truly and honestly, I, I thank you for that, and I know that our teachers thank you for that, and I feel like what has maybe gotten lost throughout the course of this year is all the great and wonderful things that are happening in our schools. The discourse that has come forward has focused particularly on individual, um, challenges that individual people are facing, but I walked through that school. I see the teaching, I see the learning, I see happy kids. I see growth, I see all of those things. And our schools, if you were to have walked through, and I will use the middle school as an example, if you would have walked through the middle school in Novem-, uh, in, I'm not gonna use November, that was a bad month to pick, sorry. Don't laugh, Chris. If you would have walked through that school in January of 2023, and you'd walked through that school this year, the change in the, um, engagement level of kids is really strong. The behaviors that we were seeing two and three years ago are greatly reduced now. Are they gone? No. Do we still have issues? Yes. Do we still require mental health services for our students? And do we still need to have a directive of restorative practices? And do we still need to utilize all of the supports that we get? Yes. But I have seen a reduction in that across the board in our schools. If you walk through our elementary schools, you would not know that there has been disruption to learning anywhere. They are, they are moving and they're on point and they're going forward. The high school has had probably one of the strongest years it ever had. And so I, I, I get so nervous when we have like the public hearing and we hear a lot of negative, uh, you know, things and challenges that are, are, you know, uh, being brought forward, and I don't discount that teachers are experiencing and, and are concerned about some of those things, but it overshadows all of the really great things that are happening in our school. And so I attended the REACH internship. You have to see some of the projects that took place and the work that was done there. I was at the senior scholarship awards last night. I was at senior awards. I was at the underclassmen awards. We have so many really great things happening, and so I just don't want the challenges that we, we have to talk about, because they're important, to overshadow the wonderful experiences that the, that, that are going on every day in all of our schools. And I, I just felt compelled to kind of put that out there, so I'm sorry if that's not about budget, but-
It's okay.
Just a little passion statement.
Oh, good. Counselor Housman, you've been waiting patiently.
I just, thank you. I, I just want to appreciate your passion, uh, and your advocacy for, uh, for the school The reason I wanted to speak was I wanted to very strongly support and follow up, uh, on something Counselor Bowen was referring to. Communication with our constituents is a challenge, and good communication tools, uh, can be particularly helpful. I agree that this chart on page 15 that came from, you know, the, the Voce School, uh, is a very effective communication tool to, uh, to explain and illustrate what's happening in the building of a budget. It's on one page, it's very clear. Uh, I think it's, it provides a really compelling, um, uh, presentation, uh, and do think it would really be helpful to be in a, in a budget book. So that's just my two cents to add to what, what she was talking about.
Well, we're always, uh, accepting feedback for improvement, so we'll take that into consideration. I know that, um, you know, it will be a different group of people standing here next year, but, you know, duly noted, I'll say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I was gonna say the exact same thing to start, so I appreciate that, Counselor Housman and Counselor Bowen, uh, but just to add to that point, when thinking about FY '27, because I know you guys do think multiple fiscal years, given that we are citywide looking at a structural deficit, I think it's that much more important that the level services budget or whatever kind of the first draft budget is, is clearly presented publicly, so that both policymakers, but then members of the community are on the same page and can weigh in as we make the inevitable difficult decisions, which sounds like were already hard this year and are gonna be more difficult next year. Um, and with that, to kind of transition to the question I was gonna ask, looking at the chart, it's clear, a lot of our fix, and this is one of your earlier charts, kind of mapping out where, where the money's going. And many of our fixed expenses, you know, 83% of our spending is wages and benefits, those expenses are fixed for the large majority of the employees through the contracts that have been negotiated. And so, just thinking about FY '27 and going back to Counselor Feldman's point about kind of the importance of the intervention specialists and some of these frontline teaching positions that I think myself and most of our colleagues, you know, we'd all say we absolutely cannot reduce the headcount on those positions. So with that in mind, and with the inevitable challenges that we're gonna face in the next fiscal year, do you see any ways, whether it's administratively, uh, ways we can maybe, I don't know, utilize some new technologies to find cost savings? Like, are there opportunities that you see the district being able to utilize, whether it's in FY '27 or beyond, potential reorganizations? Like, do you think there's ways that we could streamline the provision of services so that we're maintaining those classroom positions and kind of living within our means, or do you think we are at a point where we're just gonna break in terms of expenses far exceeding the revenues we're bringing in?
That's a tricky question, um, but I really like it.
Yes, and it's, it's a little bit of a hypothetical in the future, but it's an important one.
You know, I would say that, um, we continue to have generous class sizes in our elementary school. Not a popular statement, I'm sure, um, but we do. We, we have, uh, the, the school committee sets both targets and guidelines. Our targets are 22, our guideline for K to 2, and our targets are 25 for grades three and four. Our guidelines are, um, are, for the middle school is our targets are 25, our guidelines are 30. Our high school is our targets are 25, our guidelines are 30. We are well below those, those marks. Our average class sizes in elementary, I'm gonna say runs around 20 or 21 right now, maybe. Um, our average size at the high school is 21 or 22. So, you know, again, Beverly has, uh, always come forward that class size is a priority for them, um, and so that's something that we've tried to maintain as a priority, uh, within the budget, and as we move forward, when Chapter 70 money is available, we put it towards, uh, sort of that minimizing the class sizes to a level that the community and the school committee and the city council have, you know, expressed that it's an important priority for. There's wiggle room there. There, we could have probably had class sizes of 24 in some of our fourth grade classes across the district. Um, we, we opted and elected to keep them down around 20 or 21. Um, that we, we could have had class sizes, um, you know, at the high school that are larger, but we opt to keep them in that 22 to 25 range. Um, so, you know, there's wiggle, if that's what you're talking about wiggle room. Um, we did eliminate a central office position this year, so that was already one of the positions that we've done. I, we eliminated assistant principal at the middle school. It wasn't a popular elimination, so when we identify some, you know, we, we have lots of conversations about, you know, eliminate some of these things, but there isn't a popular elimination. We listened at our, there wasn't a single person that came forward at the public hearing that said, oh, yay, we're really glad that you're getting rid of that, you know, uh, City Connex person in this place, right? So, uh, you know, it's a, it's a very challenging, um, landscape. Um, in terms of, of using, utilizing technology, we've actually done some things within our technology budget. Uh, we had a full one-to-one in grades K and 1. Every student was assigned an iPad next year. We are not having a one- We are not having a one-to-one in kindergarten and first grade, first and foremost because we all believe that we don't need them to have tablets in their hands all day. And that was really something that grew out of the pandemic as a need to bring them home. I have a first grade grandson. I can't stand it when he's sitting on his iPad. So, you know, I believe, we believe that. But it was a cost savings as well. So that was one area that we looked to that was helpful. You know, so there are, there are, but we tried to maintain caseload sizes for special educators and classroom sizes for educators that were below the targets that we set for some of those things, you know.
And I think that's the right thing to do. So I'm glad to hear that.
But again, those are the places where if you had, if you had to, you know, look, we have, we continue to have strings in the budget for fourth grade. We continue to have an elementary librarian funding. We don't know how that's going to shake out. We're waiting to see what that will look like. We continue to, we offer two foreign languages in our middle school. We're one of the only communities around here that do. Most of the middle schools around here have one language. Don't know if that's a cost savings. You still have the same number of kids, whether it's mandatory or whether, I mean, there are so many frightening places that you would go if you were trying to really cut back. What we worked on this year was to try to make sure that we made decisions that set us up so that we didn't have major problems in '27. We're trying really hard, and we've worked really hard with Bryant and the mayor throughout the last two years to look at how we are going to plan our budgets so that we're not, it feels, there's two sides of the coin. It feels on one side that I'm being asked to really justify why I don't want more money, and then on the other side, why I'm being asked, where would I go if I didn't have as much money? That's the conundrum we live in. And that is, that is not a dig. That is actually the actual reality that we live in every day. And so I think that, I pray that federal funding doesn't get impacted so that we don't have to make tough decisions about that. I hope for all of you that FY27, that the things that we did this year, that we put in place, work and that we're helped, that they help and that they maintain, allows us to maintain some of that level funding. You know, I don't know, Emma, if there's anything you would add to that? But, you know, we're working through it as best we can, so.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I always appreciate you and the leadership team, including the council, in the process of working through those things.
Thanks.
Okay, colleagues. I originally penciled in around 10 o'clock to wrap out our discussions tonight.
If we were at the middle school, the lights would be going out.
Feeling, feeling like it's the right time to pause, but would one last comment or question? I'm not quite done. Not quite done.
I was just going to say, Counselor Hausmann was trying to throw you off.
So, you know, I guess some final comments. Dr. Trocek, just thank you for coming in, answering our questions. I think what you're hearing tonight is a reflection that this has been the dominant discussion in our community for the last year, as you know full well. And I think we all want our schools to be, you know, and you to be successful in your mission and want to make sure you have the resources to meet the needs. And when we hear the concerns, particularly about the middle school, you know, I think we just want to know that there's a plan and that this budget supports the plan to write that, right? And so appreciate that discussion.
And I know we sent you through a lot of links. I am available. Brendan comes in often, sits across the table from me, and we walk through some of the questions that he has. I am more than willing, I will say I have about 10 days left, so.
We will let you know.
You'll have to get that appointment in quick if you want it.
Thank you for that offer.
All right. Thank you.
Colleagues, we'll resume next Wednesday, June 11th. We'll have Mike Collins, Bruce Doig and Solicitors Office in to talk about their areas of responsibility. Thank you for your discussion tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee on financing properties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're done.